Her artwork was chosen for the school district report 2014. It's on the cover of the report, something we do every year. And she submitted her artwork and was chosen to be on this report, which is available throughout the community. So your artwork is available and the people have this throughout the community. So it's pretty neat that your stuff is on the front of this document that people referred to actually for years. So we're presenting Madison this evening with a gift certificate to Barnes &amp; Oles for $25 and a congratulations letter. So congratulations, Madison. The next item is we're here to basically discuss with the public a recent bid approval for civil engineering services for the proposed parking lot that's across the street. And the board reviewed these bids and they determined and awarded the bid to White Mountain Survey. And the cost for the bid was $15,700. And we're just going to open it up to the public for any questions or comments as part of a public hearing and for the board to respond to those questions. So are there any questions from the public regarding that? Priscilla?
These questions are from Judy Mason. She couldn't make it tonight. It was said at the last meeting that White Mountain had worked with Harriman on conceptual plans. Does this mean we will be receiving the same plans again that the boards already paid for?
I believe the board adopted the plan that I provided, Priscilla. And that's, I believe that's the same design that was provided to all the bidders on the project.
Wasn't this supposed to be an independent engineer drawing new plans?
No. Not according to the RFP.
Did White Mountain's price include the testing that the other bidders included?
Per test, as far as drainage issues?
Testing, I don't know before whatever testing was.
Yes, I did.
Why did the board go against the recommendation of the facilities manager? Did he give you a reason why he recommended the company he recommended?
To the best of my knowledge, he did. But the reason we went against is because they didn't have the insurance that was necessary to have a successful bid.
They didn't have insurance?
They didn't have the, to the best of my knowledge, they did not have the amount of insurance that was necessary.
And that's what he told the board in that package?
No, that's what the board's decision was after looking at all of them.
I don't remember. It's been the issue.
I speak to that. The original recommendation that came from Mr. Adams was, it was really between White Mountain as well as the other company. I don't remember the name of the company off the top of my head, but the reason for the recommendation was that the aggregate insurance amount was closer to what was required with the other company compared to White Mountain. And that was the sole reason for the recommendation.
That's not what Mr. Adams recommended, a different company?
Correct. And that different company was closer to the required aggregate insurance amount compared to White Mountain.
The other company, I just wonder why they chose White Mountain? Was it the cost?
I think the policy allows us to consider all of the proposals and make a choice based on all of the proposals.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. I just wonder what was the spark that made you choose that particular company?
Could have been the cost, but I think, I would think that the idea of somebody who was involved in the initial process already has an idea that could have been part of the reason for the ability to provide a lower bid.
Any of the individual board members discuss the project or RFP with anyone associated with White Mountain?
The SAU office has been in touch with White Mountain after the awarding of the bid.
So none of the board members have? Do any of the board members have a past or present personal or business relationship with anyone associated with White Mountain?
No. I mean, in the past, our businesses use them or clients have used them for engineering and things like that, but I don't, I couldn't name anyone that works there in particular or anything.
Nobody else? That's it.
Any other questions regarding the civil engineering services from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the actual school board agenda. The first item on the agenda is board reorganization. And you'll see board members in your packet on the first page, a list of the current seats as well as representatives on the committees. And there's also blank spaces down low to fill in as we move along here. So our first seat is the chair. So do I have a motion for the chair?
I'll make a motion to nominate Ralph Fogg as chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion. Part of my discussion would be, I'd like to take the opportunity to provide some leadership. I have some experience with boards and commissions and committees since 2008 in the town of Wakefield. I have been in the last two years studying all of the policies. I'm familiar with all of the procedures. And I believe that if, if the board would support my nomination, I could provide some leadership that would not, would not, would not act with any other direction than the best interest of the school district, the children, and the taxpayers of the town of Wakefield.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. Do we have another motion?
I nominate Norma for chair of the school board committee.
I'll second that.
For discussion.
Second for discussion.
Norma, how do you propose to chair the board when there's constant violation of policy? Meeting after meeting, without the ability to cease and desist on those violations of policy?
I guess we'll work through it. It's been ongoing for some time.
Do you understand the violation of policy that got you to this position to begin with?
No, but I'm sure you can explain.
I think before, Mr. Fogg, you answered that. Is there anyone else that has item for discussion on this? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fogg.
The way you achieved this was three, four months ago. Ms. Seer had called for an emergency meeting with the acting, with the, at the time, chair, Mr. Brown. And according to policy, when an emergency meeting is called for, there needs to be publicly noticed reason for that emergency meeting. And Mr. Brown had, had a number of times asked for the reason for the emergency meeting. Giving that, he chose not to call an emergency meeting. After that, the action came at a subsequent meeting where Bonnie decided that it was time to change the chairmanship. Violating the policy which calls for explanation for the need for emergency meeting, that was, that was the biggest reason why I rejected your nomination for chair. It was not, it was not done for a valid reason other than anger, other than a majority rules type mentality. And it's been a spiral downwards since. We've all tried to listen to each other. We've all tried to understand each other's positions. And we've all, I think, experienced some, not just distraction, but destruction of the school board based on that call for an emergency meeting. And it's unfortunate that, that just the last meeting, after it was adjourned, the violation of policy BCA continued. And it's, it's time that we reassess our leadership skills. If nothing, if nothing else, we need to be honest with ourselves and we need to recognize the fact that things need to be taken care of without closing down a meeting and starting to discuss things that really need to be in a public meeting.
Bonnie?
A few months ago, we were in discussions with, about the parking lot project. I am sorry that you feel or have the interpretation that the meeting that I called for had anything to do with other than the behavior of our chair at that point in time. I will not ever, ever be hollered at, told that my opinion doesn't matter, and be told that what I'm doing is illegal because I'm providing information and trying to get information out. Since then, Mr. Fogg, I, you are not, I am not your, you don't like me, you make it perfectly clear, in public forums and everywhere else. How do you feel that I would have the trust in you when you say such horrible things about me? And I'm compartmentalizing them because I'm taking them from where they come from and I'm not going to stoop to your level. And people won't tell me everything that you say because they know it will hurt me. But I'm, you know, something as simple as me being at the elections, volunteering for my town because I love this town and I love these kids. And you had the nerve to say that I intimidated people and that they wouldn't come to vote because I was there? Well, I called the district clerk, Mrs. Ward, and asked her if anybody had complained because I had volunteered my time, because I think it's a neat thing to do. And she said no. She told me no. But yet, you're sitting here and you're saying that you would be such a good leader? How can you be a good leader when you say such hurtful and demeaning things about the people that you're least supposed to be polite to? And I have no, I think Mrs. Joy has done a great job in a really lousy situation. I am sorry that tempers could not be controlled, but there comes a point that you have to set the example for the children and the other parents of this district. And being sworn at and called a liar and everything else takes its toll on people, just as you said. You said, "See how you feel when it's on you," at a few meetings ago. And you've done a really good job of making it. So the only reason I come to this meeting is because I love the town and I love the kids. But to sit in a room with you with your, both of your horrible remarks that you say under your breath is demoralizing to everybody that comes to this room and sits at these meetings. And it makes it hard to look at the work at hand because you're so negative. And you make me feel negative because I'm always, Mr. Fogg, you just haven't been nice and I can't say that I want you in my leadership position. And I'm sorry. It's okay that I disagree with you and Mr. Brown and, and anybody else on the board at any given time. And I'm sorry that you thought that that was, that emergency meeting. If my chair would have called back, he would have known what my concerns were, but he didn't. And that's why I felt I had to make the decision I did. And I'm sorry you didn't know that.
Mr. Olet and Mr. Brown?
My question was, you said something about the last meeting of breaking policy.
Yes.
Can you clarify that?
Yes, after the non-public meeting was adjourned, the public meeting was immediately adjourned. And Bonnie went into her statement about being disappointed that people were asking information about legal expenses and that perhaps she needed to begin her own investigation on board members. And then, I believe you left at that point and...
Actually, I didn't even hear that. I get up and I leave.
Okay. I think, yeah, anyway.
Mr. Brown?
Done?
Well, I was just, the second part of it afterwards was the fact that Norma and Bonnie had discussed something, I believe Norma wanted to share with Steve and I. And Bonnie stated that they didn't need our opinion on this. And...
What is that about?
Well, we didn't ask, I didn't ask because it sounded like you didn't need our opinion.
Do you know that maybe, I don't remember that.
So that's a policy being broken?
That's a policy being...
Well, it's one, it's one board member talking to another board member and creating a direction. It's having a board member having an influence on another board member's behavior, which is a policy BCA, I believe.
I believe you can talk to another board member without making a decision.
But they decided not to share information with these two board members.
I wasn't here, so I can't tell you.
Mr. Brown, you had your hand up.
Yes. I did hear that. And I mean, it's basically, you know, conducting, once again, conducting or attempting to conduct board business outside of a public meeting. But my comment is, back a few months ago, when, it was actually November 4th, when Mrs. Seer attempted to conduct an illegal meeting. And when that was called out on, it just so happened to be that, you know, the steering of the bid of Mrs. Seer's favorite contractor and that the decision outside of a board meeting was that they were going to steer the bid to the favorite contractor and award the parking lot bid. And when that issue was called out on, then there was this, an emergency. Because there was an emergency to award the bid. Then when there wasn't an emergency, then it was switched from, "Well, apparently we're not going to be able to steer the $200,000 bid to the favorite contractor, so now we'll just flip it and blame it on the chair." And just the, like Mr. Fogg says, and I'm sure I haven't had a chance to look at the manifest yet, but I'm sure the favorite contractor will be in here, which would, again, violate board policy because, again, we don't have three quotes. And the problem is, is the games, some people on this board are playing with other people's money. So, yeah, it's, it's corrupt. When you start playing games with other people's tax dollars, that's a problem, for me anyways. Apparently not a problem for some of the rest of you. But as long as you continue playing games with other people's tax dollars, it's going to be a problem on this board.
At this point, the discussion is moving away from what the motion was. I'd like to stick to what the motion was on the table.
You can't. I don't think it's right for them to say stuff like that and not let you be able to rebut it.
There's nothing to rebut.
Oh, please.
Oh, please. Then, well, then I get to re-rebuttal.
Ms. Seer?
First and foremost, my favorite contractor is John Seer, and he wasn't bidding. I don't know who you're talking about for the other one. Out of all the bids, I don't know who you consider my favorite.
The one you tried to steer the bid to.
You know what? I'm so sorry that you have that perception. But providing information, I had, you're, my bid was for someone totally different than you assume. And I'm so happy that you think that you know what goes on inside my head, that it's, it's okay, I guess, if you feel that way. I do not feel that I asked to hold an illegal meeting. Yes, there was vital information that you needed to know. And how to get it to you, what you're not communicating, is crazy. And the comment that I made at the end of the last meeting, shame on me. We got asked if we wanted, or some of the board members asked for all the legal information. I stated that I didn't need the packet, feeling that I trust my administration. At the end of the meeting, and I apologize that this is when it struck me, at the end of the meeting, I realized that certain board members were checking to see if I had asked for legal to be called solely on my own because I have so much power and authority that I don't even know I have it. And I looked at them and said, "Oh, my gosh, you're checking on me." And I didn't think that I would have to do that because I don't think that deceitful, backstabbing way. And I'm sorry, proof in point, I can't support you being chair because I can't trust you like you don't trust me.
Mr. Brown?
I think Mr. Fogg was first.
And then Mr. Fogg. You were first. And then Mr. Fogg.
Well, okay. As far as the illegal meeting goes, yeah, you did. And once again, we've all, how many times have we all been to the New Hampshire School Board Association and requesting, requesting of the superintendent, if three board members can speak prior to a public meeting, is in fact the request for an illegal meeting. And the superintendent finally admitted to the fact that there was a request for an illegal meeting, but it was pretty straightforward. His answer was pretty straightforward. So there was an absolute request to hold an illegal meeting because a decision had been made outside of a board meeting on who the bid was going to be steered to. And I was told that the bid was going to be steered to the favorite contractor.
Mr. Fogg?
Yeah. And Bonnie, I'm sorry you assumed that I was checking on particular legal items pertaining to you and your behavior. But I can state that I still have a text from you asking me, before these bids were thrown out, before October 15th, you sent me a text asking me to sit down and have coffee with you. And I said, "No, no, thank you." Bob came to me after that, said, "Why don't you sit down and have coffee with Bonnie?" Which tells me, Bob and Bonnie are talking about it. Norma tells me, "Why don't you sit down and have coffee with Bonnie?" That tells me three board members are discussing the issue. So why wouldn't I sit down and have discussions with Bonnie? It's because it's a violation of policy. If I believed that my proposal was independent and I had to sit down and explain my proposal to Bonnie, I would consider myself violating policy by trying to convince Bonnie, whatever the discussion was. I was not about to put myself in that position. And subsequently to that, Bob, you told me that it appears as though, you couldn't, you couldn't award me the bid because it appeared as if it was, it appeared as if it was favoritism. Yes, you did.
Never said that, Ralph. That is complete lie. A lie. Never said that.
Norma said the same thing. It appears as though...
That's a lie.
It's not a lie.
It's a lie.
Bonnie said the same thing.
Mr. Olet and then Ms. Joy.
And what you're talking about is me saying have coffee with Bonnie. I heard Bonnie ask you, and this was at news, I believe. Am I correct saying that? I heard you say it. You guys were in turmoil back and forth, wasn't doing much for our school board. So I heard her say that to you. You said no. So I came up to you afterwards and said, "Could you just have coffee with her?" And you told me no. So how did she tell me that?
Well, because your, your version of the event, you met me in the hallway before we went into the library.
No, it was in the library, actually.
Yeah. In the, in the place of the meeting for the SAU, there's a hallway and then there's a library. We were all to go in there and sign manifests. You met me in the hallway and said, "Go have coffee with Bonnie." And that was prior to going in the same room with Bonnie.
Now, is that policy, break a policy doing that? You're out of control. Out of control.
I must say that I didn't know about the coffee chat. I did ask Ralph at some point in the conversation, when he did call me, to discuss what he did incorrectly on his bid and how going forward, he could better change it. In the derogatory comments he was making about Mrs. Seer, I suggested that maybe they get together, sit down, have coffee, and air it out like adults. That's what I suggested. It had nothing to do with them two because I had no clue. And that is when Mr. Fogg informed me that he had already been approached and they had said the same exact thing. I didn't discuss anything with Bonnie and Bob. That had nothing to do with the discussion at hand. I said, "Maybe you guys should work it out because of the comments coming out of Mr. Fogg's mouth." Nothing to do with policy.
So we have a motion on the floor. A second. Does anyone want to move the question?
What's the motion again?
The motion.
It's the one...
The motion. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, Bob, it's the motion where you nominated Norma for chairman of the school board. Bonnie did a quick second. Ralph then said second for discussion.
I kind of remember that.
It's all in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Madam Chair, I'll hand it over to you.
I'm going to have to do the rest.
Okay, Vice Chair?
I'll make a motion to nominate Ralph Fogg as vice chair.
Can you second?
I'd like to second it for discussion. And that discussion probably goes right back to the same idea of policy after policy being violated. It's my only comment.
Bob?
What I like to say, Ralph, is I think you're a very smart guy. I think you know a ton of stuff about the town. But I do not see any leadership with you as far as running this board. And this is a very difficult board. I've sat on boards before. This is very, very difficult. And we're at turmoil every single meeting. We all feel like crap every meeting. And it shouldn't be that way. We should get, better get along and do our jobs, what we're elected to do. Again, I said, "You're a very smart guy. I think, I think that you know a ton of stuff in the town, but I don't think the leadership is there at this time for you to take any of those positions." You know, social media and stuff that you write on Facebook and stuff, it's just, it's just out of control. I mean, how can you be a chair or a vice chair for something like this when you continuously to do that stuff? I mean, it just gets out of control. That's just my opinion. I vote against it.
Might as well move the question.
Move the question? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Me too.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion to nominate Bob Olet as vice chair.
I decline that. I'll make a motion to nominate Bonnie Sarah as vice chair.
I second that.
Discussion. How do you have, and talking about leadership, how do you have someone who's requesting to have, to hold an illegal meeting as your vice chair? She clearly knows what she... She clearly knows what she did was illegal. And she did it anyways. She requested from the superintendent to hold an illegal meeting. I walked away to the other side of the room. There was discussion, back and forth between the two. It wasn't really straightforward, 'cause I think a straightforward answer to the request to hold an illegal meeting prior to five o'clock would have been no, that would be an illegal meeting. But the discussion was back and forth. Then there was an assistance. Is there a way we can do this? More discussion between the Vice Chair and Superintendent. Back and forth, back and forth. So how do you, how do you do that? And it's clearly, clearly, decisions are being made by a quorum of this board outside of a public meeting. And you're just gonna contin- it's gonna be the same old game. Just conduct, make all, all the decisions outside of a public meeting. But that's who you want leading the board. That's pretty good. And you wanna talk about showing the, showing the children, uh, what? How to, how to steer bids, how to request illegal meetings? Oh, you know, what's, what's, you know, uh, two hundred thousand dollars of bodies? It's only forty thousand dollars, Mr. Brown. What's, I mean, it's ridiculous. It, other, other people's money is be- that, is just being treated as, oh, well, it's other people's money. There's no, there's no concern about other people's money. And I have a problem with that. So I will be totally against anybody who could be requesting illegal meetings and steering bids, bid steering, which i- which is corrupt. It is corruption. And, and just conducting board business outside of a public meeting.
Bob?
The meeting never happened, um, in the first place, so it was no illegal meeting. It was asked for Mr. Tursi, if something, if something could be talked about. It's his job to tell us, no, yes, on any issue, that he has more knowledge about for, than us. As far as three board members getting together after, that's your opinion. That never happens. I don't talk to anyone at all during the week. So if you're talking about me, that's, never happens. I don't take any phone calls from either one of those two a- at all. The only person that used to call me all the time was you and you. And that doesn't happen anymore either. And so if you're talking about getting together and, and having a, a discussion on things, never happens. So that's your opinion.
Mr. Brown?
Um, during the request for the illegal meeting, and granted, I didn't, I didn't state that the ile- illegal meeting occurred, because I wouldn't let it occur. I walked away. And when, after the, the insistence on, "Is there a way we can do this, Mr. Tursi?" And the back and forth, you walked over to the other side of the, the room, and you told me that you and Bonnie had been talking, and that you were going to steer the bid to the favorite contractor.
That's a lie. That's a lie.
Complete lie.
You're, the two of you are liars.
That's a lie.
No, it is not. You're a liar.
Ask Mr. Adams. He was there. Ask Mr. Adams.
He walked in after.
You were with me.
No, no. Mr. Adams, yeah, me and you, and then Mr. Adams walked there, over there after the fact.
You're lying.
No, no. You're a liar.
You're a liar.
You're a liar.
Do we need a recess?
Other people's money, just, yeah. But you wanna threaten me again? You wanna threaten me again?
Yeah.
Please.
We're taking a recess.
Threaten me again.
I think you should be taken out. No, I think you should be taken out of here.
Really? By who? You?
No, the police.
Brown.
Yeah. Too bad.
Too bad.
You don't have that authority.
Stop, please. It's recess. Walk out, you guys.
It's out of control meetings.
They're just liars. That's all they're gonna do, is lie.
Yep.
Deny and lie.
I think...
They're just liars.
Pushing on.
Yep.
Can, can you?
Stop. Stop. How do I stop? Can we take a cut?
Other people's money, this doesn't even matter. Only forty thousand dollars. Why not?
Count to a hundred.
What?
Yep.
It's other people's money. Is that their plan, Dave?
Nice work, Ellen. Nice work.
When did I call the book?
At my camp.
One time?
Yep.
One time.
So you called me.
I did. I think I remember having one phone call with her. I, I just remember having one phone call.
You guys should not discuss it.
I know, I know, I know.
You need to stop.
The question was questioning my mind.
I understand, but that's the purpose of a recess, to stop the conversation.
Is there a time limit on this?
I said five minutes.
Okay. I didn't hear you say that.
Yes.
Hi, Derek. He's a good shot. Back there?
Yeah. And the sunlight comes down through it, makes it look really good.
I don't see him wearing Oakley's.
No. We, I tried to, uh, Sandy, convince Sandy. She said no.
At noon? Yeah, that'll be good. Do they get the first Tuesday? Or is it the second Tuesday?
First, Priscilla, show me the penguin you painted in Chameau.
You could either do it during one of the staff meetings.
It was a seal.
A seal.
We had a wall with a seal. Sandy says it could.
I wanna see it. Show me now. I need the laugh. She does. I know she does. I need the laugh.
I don't have a picture of it, though.
She does.
She does? Show me either way. I don't, I swear to the God. It was a seal.
Is this the manifest? Can I look at that?
Yes.
Yep. Congratulations.
He's usually glad I made a good one.
Oh, my.
Thank you cards.
Yeah.
You should have wet. Aren't they adorable?
Open me?
Yeah. These are third graders. Come on. Thank you cards.
Are these ones you already read?
Yep.
Is this an Angry Bird?
Somebody told me I was a good reader.
I loved going to kindergarten. Have you read Mrs. Togel's zipper? It's where the teachers' zipper gets stuck, and they go through like a series of steps.
Years ago, yeah.
By the end of the book, the kids can all get reviewed.
I didn't get kindergarten. I guess third grade. But aren't they the cutest?
They are. Thank you, Miss Meehan.
Yes, they do. Aren't they cute?
Yeah.
I have, they're fun. Until, until I can't play.
I love, they put the little truffle trees on it, though. Little truffle trees.
Yeah.
I actually told them that it was ruining the ecosystem, so if they cut down the truffle trees. At which point the kids said, "What's that?" I had no idea.
And she plays really well. And two years ago... Two years ago, you don't know. You know, unless you knew who it was. Two years ago, she was playing with a dancer. And she went down by the bar, and she went, like, went this way. And the back doors were so... So, it's not, exactly. And they're like, "Just stay there, just take that guy's light." And she's like... They went, the other rep went over, got the trailer, and then he goes, you know? You okay? Yeah. And then she went. And he tells him, to the rep, that he should always hold the light. She said, "I'm on watch."
Yep. And that's how it back, it's Stephen Hallway.
So she turned on her cell phone. What line was it? He said, "No." He said, "No."
Okay, can we call a meeting back to order? All right, we had a motion and a second for discussion on the table. I'd like to move the question. All in favor of voting Bonnie Seer Vice Chairperson?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Budget Committee Representative? Miss Olette.
Do we need motions on these particular things? These, these committees?
Do we? How do we do this?
Appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep all the committees as the last few months that we've had them, the same to this date.
I second that.
For discussion?
Okay, sure.
Has it been productive?
I think it has.
Can you cite, cite any instances of productivity?
Well, we're not having three members of the, uh, facilities meeting, meet at a facilities meeting, and people saying that we're kinda overriding the whole board of our decision. So I offered to step off. This way, the whole board is involved with every, um, question and, and answer. I think it's very productive that way.
I don't know. What's the motion again?
I don't think...
To keep the, my motion wants to keep the, the committees the same till, to the, up to this date, um, as the same, as we just had for the last few months.
And that's reflected here?
The what? No. Wait a minute. No, that, 'cause the last few months, we've, it's just been the board.
Right. That's why I'm proposing.
But, then, that, it doesn't show the Policy Committee. I think the Policy Committee and the Facilities Committee are the specific ones that had all of us members of the board as, you know, discussing these issues as a board.
Yeah, I'm talking about these committees that are on this page. As the same.
That's what the confusion is, 'cause lately, it's just been, there were no, it was just the board doing all the committees, not per se committees. So that's what, I need clarification. What, what, what's the motion? Is it to not have the committees and just have the board? Or are we going back to committees? Or what, uh?
Bonnie? What I seconded for was what Mr. Olette had said, was that the committees listed above would stay the same, and that policies and facilities would stay the same as it is. That it would be the five of us, for those two. And then the rest would be the people that are already on this list, is what I seconded. That's what my personal interpretation of what I was seconding was.
That's correct.
Ralph?
Um, is there still a, um, Grant Review Committee going on? What happened to that?
What?
Why not?
Because when we took everything out, we checked out the Grant Review Committee as well.
Can we bring that back into being? I mean, what, what was wrong with that?
It...
Mr. Brown?
Who, who took out the Grant Review Committee?
When we made the vote, it was dissolved with the other committees.
Oh, well, okay, then, then I would, then I'll...
Missed that meeting.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we put the Grant Review Committee, um, back in place. 'Cause I think that's important.
We have to finish the motion on the floor. So if anybody, does anybody have any, um... Does anybody not wanna be on these committees? The way they stand now? Or these right, does anybody not wanna be these representatives, the way they stand now?
Hmm, I'll do that.
Do you still wanna be the alternate for the Budget Committee, Norma?
Yeah, that's fine.
Move the question. Move the motion, I should say.
Can we, first and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Make a motion to, uh, put back the, uh, Grant Review Committee.
Take it a second.
I'll second that for discussion.
Go.
I think it's important that we maintain that committee, and I'd like to volunteer on it.
Okay, all in, any other discussion?
I'd, I'd go on, I'd like to volunteer also for that.
All right. All in favor, putting the Grant Review Committee back in place with Ralph and Steve sitting on the committee?
Aye.
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 Um, Madam Chair, I'd like to, um, volunteer for the SAU Planning Committee.
I'd like to volunteer also. Make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Bonnie? Is that something that should be the whole board? That's a pre- pretty significant, um... Mr. Tursi?
The requirements for the Planning Committee, according to the RSA, is two school board members, one Budget Committee member, four, I believe it's four members of the community at large, and the Superintendent is a non-voting member. So only two members of the board can be part of that Planning Committee, according to the structure laid out in the RSA.
Okay, remove the question. All in favor of having Ralph and Steve on the SAU planning committee?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I please ask who seconded the motion?
I do believe I did.
I voted yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Just may I on the, on the planning committee, since Ralph and Steve are on the committee at this point, I would suggest you get that ball rolling sooner than later. You have a lot of work to do.
Thank you for your advice.
Welcome.
When do you want to meet? When do you want to meet?
You need to have conversations with the town as to who's going to be on that committee. Once that committee's set, just let me know.
Does the, um, does the moderator? Do like, does he pick the four people and that?
I think he does.
I'm not sure if it's the moderator that chooses, but I believe it would be.
I think he does.
Because he would have to.
So maybe, should you contact the moderator and, and ask him to appoint four people?
I would recommend the board does it. It's really the board's planning committee.
I'd give him a ring, I'd give him a call. Is Mr. Seager still on the board?
Yes.
He gets one in?
Ms. Olet?
My question is between Steve and Ralph, one of them a chair for that? Should be a chair for that committee?
The committee will determine.
I would think so, I think the, what's the committee's?
I mean, there's only two on the right tab.
Committee will determine.
Are there any other subcommittees that aren't on this list? That anybody feels is important to be addressing or?
I don't know of anyone else. I asked them to, I mean, we asked them to bring forward the ones we have, so. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing that I can, nothing that stands out, I just.
Oh, actually, there was, we used to have the transportation committee.
What was the reason behind we didn't need that or something? There was something, there was a reason behind.
No, I think it just went south with the rest of them.
Was it lumped under facilities?
No.
No, it was a transportation committee. I'd, I'd volunteer for that.
I'll make a motion to reinstate the transportation committee.
I'd like to be on that also. With Steve, we were the same. That we were on it before.
I'll make a motion to nominate Bob and Steve to the transportation committee. I need a second for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You would want a motion to establish transportation as a subcommittee first?
Let's hold it for a second.
Ralph, you read that motion and you just seconded on that?
I know.
I'll second it.
Did you make a motion to establish it first?
I did first, and then I went and made another motion at a point, but.
Okay, so your motion is to reestablish and Steve's is to second?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to nominate Bob Olet and Steve Brown to the transportation committee.
I'll second that.
For discussion.
For discussion? If you really need to? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ms. Olet?
The facilities committee should be added as a full board on this page, basically same full board at this time.
I don't think it's necessary because this, this is your representatives in your subcommittee. We would put any facilities items on the full board agenda, so it would automatically be part of a full board discussion.
Good.
Go ahead.
For clarification, the same towards policies.
Correct.
Done with that, huh?
If he's not licensed pipe fitter, he shouldn't be working on gas.
That would be a problem if you had, had an issue with it. We'd all go up and smoke on that one, hm? But when you're a preferred contractor, you can do whatever you want.
What's the invoice number?
Invoice number? Then to 506. Going through the history there, there was a couple of other payments on the same type of work. And the explanation at one point was.
Ralph, try to make it so they can hear you.
What?
You need to try to make it so they can hear you.
I've been muttering under my breath because I'm thoroughly disgusted with what I saw. Sorry about that.
Well, you have to say it all out.
I'm thoroughly disgusted with what I saw.
What? I have a, I have a question. What are we doing with, you know, we have some contractors in here and board policy requires three quotes. And we're not, we're not getting three quotes, so why, why the continued violation of board policy on getting three quotes?
It's possible that the job was under the bidding requirements of $3,000?
Policy states even if it doesn't go out to bid, you're supposed to get three quotes. And now we, it looks like someone could be doing work that they legally cannot conduct in the state of New Hampshire, but they are conducting that work here at Paul School. So if something should happen, there's going to be an issue and once again, the taxpayers will be put at risk. So I'd like to know why, once again, board policy is not being followed on that.
Bob?
Steve, is it something that's going on now or was it passed up?
Well, there's an invoice right here, so.
So it was done previous?
Well, yeah, I don't know what the date is, but we're getting invoiced for something.
Oh, okay, but, that's kind of important.
Okay, but the, the board policies says you're supposed to get three quotes.
Can I, what can I?
Do we know if there was something?
Well, I think.
I mean, you can't tell just by an invoice if they bought three people or not. You'd have to ask Bob, right?
Yeah, was it something that would fall under repair and maintenance?
It was no heat in one of the classrooms. I don't think that we should be calling around. We should get somebody in here to repair it.
Who's licensed to do the job?
And I understand that, but again.
But that, that's putting the.
That certainly needs to be checked on. Yes, Bob?
So me looking, me looking at this, how do I know he's not a licensed gas fitter?
Well, we heard that in the conversation on the 18th of February.
Oh, this particular, okay. So this guy's putting together gas fittings?
That's illegal.
In the school? It's illegal, right?
The, the state could step in and.
Kind of hope it does.
Maybe someone should notify the state. Maybe, maybe the state will get the board to adhere to.
Just look this way and forget about it.
It's only policy. It's only law.
Bob?
Mr. Tersi, can you have Bob Adams look into that to see if this?
He'll have it on my notes.
He's way ahead. Any other questions on the manifest? Can you get a motion to approve the manifest?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. So the manifest doesn't pass?
Is that because of the, that one?
That one invoice?
Because we can.
I want clarification on, on that. It could have been done.
Well, that doesn't mean the rest of the people shouldn't be paid.
Good point.
Can you make, can you make a? Can you make a vote?
Doesn't mean the rest of the taxpayers need to be at risk.
No, we're talking about one issue.
I didn't say that. Please don't put words in my mouth.
That is my opinion. I'm expressing my opinion. I didn't put any words in your mouth, Bonnie.
I just asked if we could pay the rest of the bills.
Aside from that one invoice.
Aside from that one.
Be a motion?
I'll make that motion, other than that particular invoice, 2967.
But your motion would be to reconsider the previous vote?
My, my vote, I would consider my particular vote on that one and make a motion to, to make a motion on that particular invoice only and approve the rest of the manifest.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Can, clarification, what the motion wa, is?
To pay all of the invoices except for that one invoice.
That will have Bob Adams checking to.
But first, you got to go to a motion to reconsider the, the previous vote.
You did.
Kind of.
And then you have to go back and.
It's done, Steve, it's done.
Then I'm opposed to, it's not going to be done right.
Mrs. Seager?
I thought we did. Bob, did you make a motion to reconsider?
I did.
Okay.
Beth, do you have those on correct? Yeah, that Bob reconsidered his vote and continued on the motion to pay all invoices except for the one in question. I kind of did it in one fluid. Does it have to be two separate?
I think it has to be two separate is what Steve is saying.
Because not, not one person can reconsider their vote. It's the vote of the board that has to be reconsidered.
So should we go back and, go ahead, Mr. Tersi?
Keep in mind, trying to find, follow Robert's rules to a T can sometimes impede the progress of the business of a board. Just want to make that comment.
Yes, but.
It's a recommendation of Robert's rules without adoption. I believe Mr. Brown brought that up at one of the meetings as well.
Right, but I mean, you, you know, you.
So if we don't practice proper procedure, at this instance, we don't need to practice it at the next instance. So if this board is okay by consensus with what just happened, and I am, I'm fine with it, then it should stand.
But now you got.
Go ahead, Steve.
But now you got two votes. So now you'd have to go back and reconsider both and.
Is there general consensus on paying the manifest? With the exception of the one invoice?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Ralph?
I'm against.
Okay.
I'm against the procedure and I'm against the manifest.
Okay.
I also oppose.
Okay. Moving on, minutes of the last meeting. Minutes of 2:2515. Public session.
The visitors, that's Nathan, not Mason.
Thank you. Anya Solomon?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as they stand.
Well, can you do it as amended so you?
Oh, as amended, sorry.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand for the vote.
Minutes of 3:415, public minutes?
Talking about the public minutes?
Public minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the last page, page seven of the packet.
Okay.
Bonnie's here, made the motion to adjourn the public meeting at 8:52, not 8:54.
I'm sorry, what time?
8:52, it was immediately after the motion to adjourn the non-public meeting.
Okay.
Do you have the motion to approve the public minutes?
As amended?
As amended?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll stand from that vote.
Non-public minutes of March 4th, 2015. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
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 Public comment? Yes?
Would I ask the board to change the procedure? When you come out of non-public, can you open the door and help the teacher in the hallway back into the room before you entertain a motion to adjourn a meeting?
We can do that.
Appreciate that. And I'd like to know how your surplus money is invested. So I looked in the, the school district report to see how much interest you've made. It said zero. So I just wondered how you invest that money.
We'll have to get back to you on that one.
Can I get that answer emailed to me?
Certainly.
And I just saw the calendar in here and I wondered if the chair of the board, the chair of the joint board were a part of the conversation in preparation of that calendar.
I was not. I was not.
So you were ignored again. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra?
Sandra Jackson, I'm speaking as a president of Wakefield. I'd like to make a suggestion for the parking lot since the warrant article for the money was voted down. If we have any surplus this year and things can be put in, like in, you know, that you're going to have, I would firmly recommend that you use to do something and continue on because to stop at this point just creates more of a problem for the kids in the afternoons and mornings, not, and it's also a safety issue. And with article nine having been defeated, and I assume that you're moving on to withdraw from SAU, I'd like a better, I haven't heard a good comment of why, or reason why you're withdrawing, and I appreciate that. And on the planning committee that you just voted in, is that the most part of the withdrawal committee that you're looking for?
Yes, the planning committee will be part of the withdrawal committee. Ralph?
During the public hearing on the award of the, the bid, did you declare the balance in the, in the existing fund, fund line?
With taking out the $15,700, that leaves us a balance of $53,218 in the parking lot trust fund.
What was that number again? I'm sorry.
$53,218. And 48 cents.
Okay. Administration? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions about the SWIFT framework. I was wondering if we have a leadership team and who are the teachers on it and are there any parents on it?
Are there any what on it?
Parents.
Which one of our staff is-
Mr. Gregoire.
Currently, the leadership team is part of our curriculum instruction assessment team. Myself, Mr. Byrne, Ms. Levitt, Ms. Kuehl. Hang on, gotta pull them all up.
Ms. Bonnavee.
Ms. Frothingham, Ms. Bonnavee, Mr. Roburge. Ms., no.
Ms. Huckins.
Ms. Huckins, yeah, Ms. Huckins. I do request that the parents, the four parents be on that leadership?
They're supposed to, according to-
And that's what we're doing right now.
So there aren't any parents on it right now or are you-
Not currently. Not currently.
Have you established, like, your vision statement?
We haven't. The teachers submitted their ver, what they saw as the vision for the school.
Okay, and are we going to have access to any of the information about it or soon?
Soon.
All right, thank you.
Ralph?
Is the school board going to have any access to this information?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Tracy?
Once the visioning work is done within the building, which is specifically to the staff's vision around the five domains within SWIFT, the board will receive a presentation regarding the staff's visioning work. So you'll have full access to that.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Gregor, are you referring to the Wakefield Weekly of February 13th? Is that what I just heard you discussing?
Uh, February 13th, maybe. Is that in the packet here?
No, that one, good.
So which, which, what are you referring to?
Here at the Paul School, we have a curriculum instruction and assessment team, which consists of faculty members, administration, and the district curriculum coordinator. This diverse group makes recommendations to the principal and assists in decisions about teaching and learning at our school. The team meets twice weekly, the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, for an hour. We are looking for two or three community members who would like to join in helping us move a shared vision forward. I'd like to certainly volunteer for that and I'd like to know where, why, where the, the board makes the decisions on this, why, why was the board never notified of this?
Mr. Tracy?
The actual joint board was notified of this structure when I, I believe, third month that I started, that we had CIA teams in all of the buildings within SAU 64 and what the configuration was of all of those teams. So the board was informed and specifically to building level. It hasn't, hasn't ventured out and Mr. Gregoire is attempting right now to get parents of current students as part of that CIA team. So the board was notified of the organizational structure of our leadership throughout the SAU, specifically at, at Paul School as well.
So is this, so curriculum instruction and assessment will be, will be set up, if you will, or, or, I'm sorry, will, will be decided upon outside of, of a board decision? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
So the board doesn't ma, make these decisions anymore?
Not if who's going to be on that CIA team and at the building level decisions that are specific to the operations of the school that do not require board approval, nor is it required to actually have a board member on a building level committee that's making everyday decisions of what's happening in the facility.
On, on curriculum instruction and assessment?
Correct. The large topics that need board, board approval or board discussion or presentation will be brought to the board.
For, for, board decision?
Correct, if necessary, if it's an action item. Most of the items will come to you, there'll be information. If it needs to be action, you'll get that notification and what the presentation will be on and I'll ask for board approval.
But you just said that we, we don't decide curriculum in this building?
That's not what I said. I said, you know, the curriculum instruction assessment team is the leadership team of the building that makes daily decisions around curriculum instruction and assessment. However, the adoption of curriculum, which the teachers are diligently current, they're working on currently, will come to the board for approval.
All right, and, and when is, and when are these meetings?
Tuesdays.
Second and fourth Tuesdays, what time?
At 3:30.
3:30 here in the library?
No. In one of the teachers' rooms.
But it says that so you'll be able to come in and I can find out where it is and my intent to attend.
I don't recommend that, Mr. Brown.
Well, I'm a community member.
It's not part of the team.
Mr. Tracy, can you answer that? Go ahead.
Yep, the, I believe Mr. Gregoire was looking for two or three parents to be on that, on that team. We would not like that team to get very large due to efficiency and effectiveness of smaller groups. So I'm leaving that at the building level decision as to who is going to be on that team.
So whose decision is it ultimately? Who gets on and who doesn't?
I'm leaving that up to Mr. Gregoire and his CIA team.
Okay. Administration, curriculum coordinator's report.
So because of the survey last, in the last board meeting that I attended, I gave you a survey of what the teachers, how long the teachers needed still to complete their curriculum units. And due to that, we have three weeks designated in the summer for curriculum work. I actually presented at the focus and priority meeting on how curriculum instruction and assessment all fit together to move student learning forward. And I continue to meet with teams to look for the implications. We actually had some data meetings here at the school on the implications of instruction after we looked at the student data. And our SWIFT adoption vote was 93%. The staff voted in favor of joining SWIFT.
Agreed.
Any questions?
Ralph?
At the board level here, we discussed trying to bring back the idea of teaching kids cursive writing. Is there any room for that in your curriculum development?
Cursive writing is taught in third grade.
Thank you.
Steve?
It's only one grade it started?
And it continues on throughout.
I don't think that's accurate. Both my boys are fifth, sixth grade and they do not know cursive. They don't even have to sign their name.
That's atrocious.
That's, that's the correct way to sign your name.
Correct.
They just Mac X or?
They, they print it. We taught them, you know, ourselves, but, but they're not learning it.
Ralph?
Didn't we have a discussion at the board level about bringing back cursive writing?
It was my understanding that we were going to be teaching cursive. And this person just indicated to us that they're teaching it, so I don't-
May I?
Please.
Remember that these curriculum units are being written now for all of the discussion that you did on the new standards from adopting the Massachusetts standards. So they are included in the units that they are now writing, those units.
Bonnie?
So to the, to, I'm asking if I'm understanding this, and I know that the situation with cursive is that it got kind of pushed aside and then it was taught, but, so at this point in time, the curriculum that you're working on does not necessarily mean that the curriculum being taught today meets those standards because they're changing them? I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
I'm saying that the curriculum that has been implemented before we've started to rewrite the curriculum may or may not have had those standards in them.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Mr. Fog?
I think I read somewhere recently where we're supposed to be instituting the Massachusetts standards of 2013. And isn't that the year that Massachusetts adopted Common Core standards? And, and hasn't their achievement levels dropped since 2013 when they, when they adopted Common Core standards?
I'm sure. The current curriculum work is based on the 2010 Massachusetts standards? So I'm not sure where you read 2013.
It's actually 2000 to 2004. Those are the curriculum standards that the board has adopted and those are the ones that the teachers are using for their curriculum units.
So it's prior to 2010, which is when Massachusetts adopted Common Core?
So if I brought a piece of paper that said 2013, I just imagining that I'm reading 2013?
I thought it was 2013 myself.
Those are not the standards that have been distributed to the teachers in order to write the curriculum units. The standards that have been distributed to the teachers have been the 2000 and 2004 standards from the Massachusetts archives.
And I can guarantee that the teachers that are in this room would attest to that as well.
I only see a couple head to nodding.
Steve?
Uh, when, when is the board going to vote on SWIFT?
Mr. Tracy?
Again, it's a building level decision for support that they feel that they need in order to move the school forward, keeping this at a building level. Hence, the vote for the, the staff to participate in SWIFT at 93%. And if you have 93% of your staff stating that they want to be part of SWIFT and then it comes to the board level and it's voted down, then how is that moving forward with support of the staff and what they feel? This is actually something that the staff voted on and said that they want, so it's not coming to the board level for approval.
Well-
For a purpose. I believe the paperwork that I read said on the last page that to implement SWIFT, you have to be part of Common Core.
Which is not true.
Ralph?
I thought Laura there, the lady with SWIFT acknowledged that it was aligned with Common Core during her presentation.
It is.
She didn't?
Not all of it.
Not all of it?
May I?
Yes, please, Mr. Tracy.
The question was specific around Common Core and does, will SWIFT support Common Core? And yes, SWIFT will support Common Core if you have Common Core standards in your school. Other schools utilize Common Core standards and SWIFT is supporting that. However, SWIFT is supporting our current curriculum work that is based on Massachusetts standards prior, prior to 2010. So SWIFT is not affiliated with Common Core in the sense that they promote it, in the sense that they teach it, in the sense that it's required to be part of the SWIFT network of support.
Steve?
Well, it, it's on video and I, I believe that Mr. Fog is correct on this, that the young lady did state, and it's clearly on video, that she did state that SWIFT is aligned with Common Core.
But I-
Bob Adams.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
I just suggest they move the last paragraph saying it's, if you're going to use SWIFT, you have to be using Common Core. It does state that. People read that, they're going to think, think that the school's using Common Core.
Where is that located? The paragraph?
Make said?
Sure.
Last page.
Do I have that?
Last page.
Page ten or, I mean, number ten or last-
May I have this, Ed?
It wasn't mine.
Mary? May I have this?
Do you want it?
Did you pull this off the website?
Uh, no, you're going to have it. It's okay.
Thank you.
Give him your bit.
I'll get it back to you.
No, you can have it. I can, I can have it.
Thank you.
Cost you though.
I'm sure.
So I'm just, I just, because I know that smarter balance assessments, they state that they're aligned with Common Core. So I'm just, I just, because I know that smarter balance assessments, they state that they're aligned with Common Core. Page seven of ninety-two. And SWIFT has stated that they are aligned with Common Core and the school board has rejected Common Core. Does that mean the administration doesn't support what the school board is asking? What, what does it mean? What, how are we disconnected? Or are we disconnected?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Tersi?
I could, I can sit here and talk till I'm blue in the face, and you can believe me or not believe me. Common Core is not associated at the Paul School in curriculum development or any of the professional development that is happening within the building and even outside of the building. We've restricted, and I'll use the word restricted, our teachers from participating in professional development across the state that's affiliated with Common Core. Again, you could look in this room with the teachers that are nodding their head, yes, that, yes, I'm telling the truth. So there is no, there is no breakdown of expectations that this board has established around Common Core within this building.
Steve?
Can we get the answer to Bob's question whether it actually states that on that paper?
Last page. February ten.
May I see it after you look at it, please?
Does it say that way, Mr. Tersi?
Framework includes the use of Common Core standards, assessment, and curriculum. Yes, it says at second talking point, number ten. So...
That confused me.
So for Paul School, they should amend this because it's not applicable. Is that the same document, Steve? Is this?
Well, probably, but maybe.
It's this one? Second talking point on ten.
So...
Ralph?
Wouldn't it be easier and less confusing for the school board if there was somebody sitting in these meetings and, and listening and maybe coming back to the school board with the information that we're not getting? And how can we have any comfort level without firsthand knowledge? I mean, is it impossible and unacceptable to have a school board member sitting in this, this assessment team? Whatever, whatever you call it.
Bonnie?
I'm sitting here and I'm listening to everything. I have faith and trust in our administration and our teachers, and I think that they're gonna come forward. I think that it's in, I think it's inconvenient that some of the topics that are on the internet aren't necessarily geared specifically to Paul School. But I think that, I think that they've listened to us and I think that it was a difficult... I don't think it's necessarily an easy transition to go against the grain of what everybody else is doing. But I have faith in the administrations and the teachers in this, in this, in this building that they're doing a great job and they're working on what's best for the kids.
And I asked the question of the SWIFT people, I called and said, we don't do Common Core, we're not aligned with Common Core. Are we still going to be able to fully utilize your services? Is this gonna be a good program for us? And as the same answer we got before, yes, it doesn't have to be Common Core. They're there to help the educators. It doesn't have to be a Common Core program. And I mean, unless they're programmed to tell that story when they answer the phone. I mean, I did go out, I did reach out to them and I did do my homework on this and they're saying the same thing that our curriculum coordinator told us months ago when we asked about this. You don't have to be teaching Common Core curriculum to be able to utilize the SWIFT program.
Mr. Tersi?
And as for your, your question, Mr. Fogg, the, I'm sure that the CIA team would be more than happy to provide the board with updates when they have information that's necessary for the board to be updated on. You know, the general discussion that happens at those, those meetings doesn't necessarily constitute an action items. They can be just general conversations around the operations of the building. If the, if for some reason the CIA team feels that the board should be updated on some of the major topics that might need policy development as well as approval of curriculum, then that'll be brought forward to you. However, those conversations need to happen at the building level with building level staff.
Mr. Brown?
What's the framework that's going to align federal? Why, why is, why are we aligning anything to federal? This is our school. This isn't the federal government school. This is our local school. Why, what framework is aligning to anything with the federal government? And, and what barriers are being removed so that SWIFT can be implemented to begin with?
I have no comments, Mr. Brown. We've been through this conversation over and over again when it came to Common Core and smarter balance. I understand your opinion and I know where that is and where you stand and...
It's right here in black and white. There's, there's barriers and there's a framework.
I'm not gonna engage in conversation or debate around it.
And but the board has, so they're just doing away with local control is what's happened. This is just a first step into doing away with local control, which is the whole concept behind, behind this. The whole thing. So now we're just sitting here as, as figureheads. Because they're, they're taking away local control and this is not right.
Student Services Report.
May I have that to get back to Mary?
So later on the agenda, you'll see second reading for the school, the tuition expenses for non-disabled students. Speaking of, and also a draft letter for your review that once the policy is approved will be sent home to the current non-disabled students of the curriculum. We had our second special education retreat on February eleventh. We worked on developing protocols and tools to facilitate communication during teacher consultation, collaboration. And we developed some action plans on working together to develop some common accommodations and modifications for the curriculum work that's being done. You have your enrollment numbers there. And are there any questions?
I just have one. Could you, how many are three-year-olds and how many are four-year-olds going into kindergarten? So we can kind of know what we have for availability next year. If you don't have it, you can just...
I'll even, I think I have it.
I just, I'm curious.
Oh, right, it's right on here. So in the PM, four non-identified, six identified. The PM program is the four-year-old program.
Oh, it is. I thought they could go to either. Okay, I'm sorry, that's my misunderstanding.
We've had a lot of referrals, so we might not have very many openings for non-disabled students.
Steve?
And what, and what's the, the school over in, in Laconia that we utilize?
You're talking about the transportation expenses. It's not a student that's identified with a disability. So, well, it is, but that's not why the students in Laconia. I think beyond that, we'd have to discuss it in non-public.
All right, I was just looking for the name of the school.
It's a public school.
Principals Report.
First let me say that I jumped the gun a little bit on the, the snowstorm that canceled our PTA winter carnival. I'm sure the parents would have had a great time and the students, so let me just apologize for bullet number four that I didn't, I jumped the gun and that won't happen again. Mr. Boynton held a jump rope for heart, always a big hit. Kids had a great time. We had students come from another school and do a presentation on jump rope and what a great time it was watching them. Thanks for Mr. Boynton for setting that up. As you, we already talked about the SWIFT. And March was our Dr. Seuss literacy month and we had our celebration. We had lots of people come in to read to the schools, so I want to make a big thank you to everybody who did that. Ms. Cuddy and Ms. Anderson set that up and they coordinated all the events that went on. That was outstanding. I can't say enough, if you haven't been over to Spalding to see the Mary Poppins show...
I'm going on Sunday.
We took our eighth graders over. It was an opportunity to get all of our eighth graders together with the other eighth graders in Rochester for the first coming together of the freshman class. Again, just the plug for Spalding, if you haven't been over there to catch that show, it was dynamite and you're really missing out. We are hosting a blood drive here at school as we usually do to the Chamber of Commerce. So that is April twenty-fourth, so if you're looking to get some blood, come on down. What I didn't put in there was we also have our kindergarten registration coming up on April seventeenth. Just to let you know, we'll be having the kindergarten students staying home on that day as we usually have so we can have the screening for our incoming kindergarteners on the seventeenth. Any questions?
Thank you.
In my report, I have sent out a couple of different things. I'd like to quickly go over the discipline report so I can focus on some of the more interesting, fun things that we're doing. I wanted to cover, you know, February. If you look at the total of referrals for the month of February, although it was a short month, it was a very low referral rate. We only had ten students refer to the office. We have a total of one hundred and ten students year-to-date in, up to February. That's a very low number at that point. I also took a look at students who had only been in the office once or students our total population and at that point, we've only had fourteen percent of our students enter our office. So that's a good thing. That's extremely low. And then if you look at year-to-date referrals, we do have six, for repeat offenders, we do have six. With six or more, we have twenty-six percent of all our referrals. That is why if I say you have one hundred and ten of those, but I'm talking about low numbers of fourteen percent of our total population, it's because we do have a few students who have that repeat offense there. But on to some more of the fun stuff and then I'll let you ask questions if you have any. In the packet, you also receive a flyer for what's called, we're putting together the first annual fund run. And what we're hoping to do with that is bring in some community participation, really celebrate some things, raise some money for PBS, rewards for the students, programs, being able to bring in speakers, things of that nature. At this point, very, on the very early onset of it, we already have thirty-five people signed up to run it. We have reached out to community companies and they have donated money to help us get this off the ground in order to pre-purchase the shirts. We are putting their names on the back of the shirt as well as some of the other things that we're doing as a thank you and a sponsor. We have teachers who have volunteered to help us coordinate it, along with the PBS team, of course, so that if they're not wanting to run it, they can still help coordinate and be out there. We created a one-mile loop for the younger students so they could still participate even without going on that five K. We really put a lot of work together as a PBS team to get this off the ground and we're hoping that it becomes an annual thing. We've had a lot of feedback and interest in it so far. An additional thing that the PBS team was able to do was a rollout today. To, we actually, the two of them, we broke it up K to five and then six through eight. And it was a very successful rollout. The kids had fun, the staff, I think every staff member here would say that it was one of our most successful rollouts. The kids actually, believe it or not, sixth through eighth grade looked sad that it ended. Like they, they were expecting it to go a little longer and they were looking forward to it. That will be, it was filmed from sixth, for the sixth to eighth grade. That will be on our website for people to look at, because there's been some questions exactly what does PBS do and how can we get that out there more? So we decided to, we've put a different one on the website in the past. This one I think is even better. We've filmed it, it will be up on the website. We're gonna do some editing to it solely so that you can see the videos that we show to the students a little more clearly. And speaking of that editing, I just gotta throw one big shout out to Mr. Trader because he has done an amazing amount of work outside of school to put the videos together so that that rollout was that successful. We took videos, we took clips, we had live feed, fake feed put into live feed and used it all, embedded into it. And without his skill in that, we wouldn't have been able to do that. So he's gonna do some more editing in order to get it on the website.
Great.
Any questions?
I do.
Yes?
How long you been planning on this?
The fund run? We started, I want to say, as a PBS team, we talked about different ways to do fundraisers. I want to say in January, we started, no, November, January? January, we started talking about it. We started working on it and doing some of the details, contacting the city, the town to make sure that we could do it, calling the police department to see if they could help us with it. So I would say close to, you know, since, since January. And then recently, we just put a lot more work into it.
Ralph?
Have any board members heard about this yet to this point?
I had heard about it.
You had?
Mm-hmm.
Is this what you probably didn't need our opinion on?
No, this was something my daughter-in-law brought home to me because of my grandchildren in this school.
I saw about it on TV on Channel Three. Joe was down at the town hall. And I think it's, it sounds fun, maybe I'd participate, but if you're using the school facilities before you go, if this, if the event's starting and stopping here, people are gathering. I imagine you know everybody that's gonna run in it, right?
Do I know everybody?
Yeah.
No.
You know? People gonna be bringing backpacks and things like that, right? Probably? Probably?
Probably.
Okay. So if some tragedy happens, who's really gonna be responsible? Wouldn't policy make it the school board's responsibility? And shouldn't we, just wanting to follow policy, shouldn't we know about the stuff? And I, I'm not against running or dancing or anything else, but if something happens, the school board is gonna be responsible for allowing something to go on that we didn't even know about. Until now, it's been planned, it's, and it sounds like a great event. It does sound like a great, great event. But if you're using the facilities, stopping and starting here, and something happens, say somebody got run over in this mess of a parking lot, who gets sued? Is there a waiver of liability?
Mr. Tersi?
The school board is not liable for the events that are held here at the school or if the school facility is being used, particularly say the parking lot is a gathering area. There isn't a board member here that would be held liable for those events.
I, I don't care about me personally. I care about the whole town being sued, being sued because somebody gets run over because a driver isn't looking. They're gonna go after the deep pockets. And if this policy, if I read it right, we just, we just need to know about it and we need to make sure that there's like hold harmless clauses signed and stuff like that. It's fairly simple.
Mr. Gregoire?
Which policy are you referring to?
I think it's KF, but, but...
As I read the policy, you know, school events, I have the authority to approve. As I read the policy, as the school, in park and rec and the other, other programs outside of the school would have to go before the board?
Any group, in part eleven, any group desiring to use the facilities for activities such as gymnastics, dancing, theatrics, or any organization shall present a certificate of adequate liability insurance before use can be granted. All organizations must fill out the hold harmless form. So wouldn't we as a school board be neglectful to make sure that these items aren't addressed?
I interpret that all organizations being organizations outside of our school.
It's not an organization.
And again, I'm not against it. I think it's a great idea and it's fun, but...
But it says it's written, it's not an organization.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
KF is on the agenda.
Yes, it is.
On our policies, if we wanna talk about that policy in specifics and in detail.
I'm talking about the event.
I understand that. But if we're gonna review the policy, we should keep it to the agenda.
Okay. Bonnie?
I guess I look at it, is, this is something great for the school and you didn't have, you don't have, like, the Penguin Plunge sign a liability waiver, you don't have Jump Rope for Heart sign a waiver. It's school-based, so it's part of the school. It's just taking place like Stregonon would have. Like, someone could've choked on spaghetti, but, I mean, it's a school thing. I mean, it's, I don't understand why you have it. I think you're splitting hairs. I think it's great. They're not an outside organization, they're us. I guess I read and interpret K F different than you. I think it's a great idea.
I didn't say it wasn't a great idea.
I, that was my opinion. I think it's a great idea. I think that we have different interpretations of K F. Okay, and we'll get to that when K F comes up. Steve?
Just a, I mean, the piece, I mean, yeah, I think the board should know what's going on. Instead of finding out when you're sitting at home and, and, and watching the television and, you know, somebody from the school district is going to the selectmen. You know, some communication of, of this beforehand would have been great, but...
I hope everybody has fun and I hope everybody wins the race. Not that that's possible, but I just, I just see if, if we don't know everybody bringing stuff to the school, ultimately, the school board is responsible for what happens, ultimately. It is. It absolutely is. You can say it isn't, but...
All right, moving on. That's the school administrative meeting sixty-four, sorry.
Madam Chair?
Well, it was on the same thing. I was, I'm sorry, but Jerry's, Jerry's saying, you have a letter here. And I was, I wanted to address it before Nate started talking. This, the spring students in New Hampshire, eighteen other states, including our neighbors. Is this the letter that was sent home to parents about smarter balance assessments?
It went home to Wakefield Weekly.
Pardon me?
Went home in the Wakefield Weekly.
It went home in the Wakefield Weekly.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
That, what you see there, Mr. Fog, is in the most recent edition of the Wakefield Weekly and attached to the Wakefield Weekly was the parent information forms, parent information forms around smarter balance. So that's, that was actually put in the Wakefield Weekly under the principal's message of the one that went out this past Friday, I believe. And attached to it, which is in your packet as well, are the parent information sheets that were attached.
Were we going to give the parents any idea at all that they have the right to say no to this smarter balance assessment? If they choose to keep their student out of something that tests their psyche?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
We, we clearly do not have the authority to grant and opt out for a student. If parents are making that choice, parents can make that choice. However, we'll address that on an individual basis, in conversations with parents, if that's what they're choosing to do.
But if you're not allowing the parents the information in your, in your informational statement, if you're not giving the parents an idea that they have an opportunity to, in my opinion, protect their child from a smarter balance assessment, are we fully taking care of, of the students? Are we showing both sides of this issue?
In the smarter balance material that they, that's attached to the Wakefield Weekly, it was attached, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. In that, it's, it gives you, it says what consequences will occur if I do not allow my child to participate in these assessments. It's on the second page, I believe, Ralph. You know, it doesn't, it says state school districts and schools do not currently have any authority to waiver, opt out, opt a student from statewide assessment. That doesn't mean as a parent, you can't just, it's not opt out. You can just refuse to have your child take the test and, and they can read or what, whatever the school decides to do, but it is brought up in this, this information. Yes, Steve?
I would totally disagree with that because conveniently, it stayed, yeah, the state, the school districts and the schools do not. But the parents absolutely do and that's, you know, I, I totally disagree that the parents, this is, this is geared toward trying to put the, the thought into parents' heads that they don't have the right. And it clearly doesn't say, state that the parent do in fact have the right. So that's just, I would just like that clarification, that parents do have the right to refuse the, the assessment. And the parents should refuse the assessment. And I would actually like to see a refusal form sent out to parents on the smarter balance assessment.
Or just made available, you know, I mean, take away the options when there'll be no option left.
All right, there's no, no redress, man. That's why they're trying to do away with local control.
Go ahead, Mr. Tersing.
So in your packet on page twenty-seven and twenty-eight is the information around the school board scholarship. There's a, you'll see a copy of the letter. We send one to the Gaffey Library. We send one to all of the high schools that our, our students attend and any of the other schools that our, our high school students attend for the school board scholarship. So we'll be getting that out. You know, so see what the scholarship application looks like on the back, on page twenty-eight. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and you can see when the due date is for the students to have their essays returned. They need to be submitted to the SAU by May first, two thousand and fifteen. Then the essays obviously will be reviewed by the building level committee and also by the board to make that decision as to who will be awarded the scholarship. Just wanted to include that in there so you know what the letter looked like, as well as the scholarship application.
And the topic as well, right? The, the question is right about a challenge you have faced and how it has helped you grow into a, a successful student.
Mr. Gregor?
That is last year's question.
We have some more important new questions to peruse.
Okay.
Has that letter already been sent out?
No. No. So I'll need that as soon as possible. Probably have on that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I also wanna just give the board an update. I was able to attend the New Hampshire Department of Education quarterly meeting. These, these quarterly meetings are held throughout the state and this one was held at Southern New Hampshire University. And I had an opportunity to attend a presentation by the principal as well as some teachers of the Memorial Elementary School in Sandborne Regional School District. And they're noted as really leading, one of the schools leading the state in competency education at the, at the elementary level. And had an opportunity to listen to what they had to say and how they started implementing a competency-based education system within their schools as well as within the district. This will be a requirement in three years of all schools in the state for K to twelve competency development. They've been working on it, I believe it's been for eight years now, to get to where they are at this point. And it started from within the staff itself, which was very nice to hear and that's, I believe that's why it's been so successful. So they did do a great presentation, learned quite a bit from how they were able to move competency education forward in an elementary school, because at this point, it's always been directed right at the high school level as a requirement. But now, and even prior to the recent passing of the rules to have competency education K to twelve, you can see that schools at the elementary level have already been implementing it and it's taken some time to do so. So it was nice to hear that. The next item on the agenda is regarding FY sixteen budget. And I just wanted to bring this to the board because I feel we need to have a discussion around this with the vote last Tuesday. You see the approval of Article Four, which was the budget committee's recommended number, which is approximately three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars less than the bud, than the board, the school board's recommendation. So right now, we're looking at operating at a, at a number that is three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars less than our anticipated expenses. So I would like to have a conversation with the board and ask the board if they will give me the approval to notify the association of potential reduction in force. Because we would have to make that notification prior, because we have to let teachers know that they have contracts by April fifteenth. So I would hope that this evening, the board would give me that approval so I can put the association on notice. The, the issue really comes around that we had two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of estimated, and I would consider anticipated revenues for federal funds. And then a hundred and twenty thousand dollars was taken out of the proposed budget for ten, that's ten tuitioned high school students, which was another hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Basically, it's a hundred, it's a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. So you put those two together, it's three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. What I would, what I'd recommend we do at this point, with, in order to avoid potential layoffs, is that we consider the two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in federal funds as unanticipated revenues and follow the law to hold a public hearing and have a vote at the board level to accept and expend up to two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars so we can avoid any shortfalls in the budget and be able to accept our federal entitlements in order to maintain our Title One programs, as well as our professional development through two A. I, I believe that we can do that because if you look at and refer back to the presentation that I did on the MS twenty-seven, you'll see that the column of the budget committee recommendation, which ultimately was the number that the voters approved, within that column, the federal funds are not listed as anticipated revenues. Therefore, we consider them as unanticipated revenues and hold the public hearing, listen to what the public has to say, and then the board makes a vote as to whether we accept and expend up to the two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And that would be my recommendation to avoid teacher layoffs and having a substantial impact on the direct instruction for our students, particular Title One students.
Steve?
Didn't we go out and expect, expend money for legal services about this whole particular issue? Wasn't this the whole thing with the budget committee? And we, we, like I said, we've already spent funding and the lawyer said, you cannot just, you cannot do with what you just proposed that we have to put the, the federal funding in as revenue.
That's correct.
And now you wanna just ignore that and...
No, I'm actually not ignoring it at all. I'm finding a way that we can actually accept and expend those federal funds as unanticipated revenues. The legal, the legal memo was based on the fact that we should be gross budgeting and including those federal entitlements within our, our estimated and anticipated revenues, which they were not, based on Tuesday's vote. So now we consider those unanticipated revenues because they weren't listed as anticipated revenues on our MS twenty-seven. So we actually tried to follow specifically, and the board's recommended number, which was in the article, did follow the legal opinion that was distributed to the budget committee as well as the, the board. So at this point, we're looking to consider them unanticipated revenues because they weren't listed as anticipated revenues.
I, I, I see a peanut in the shell for some reason. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see how you can say, well, legally, we have to make them anticipated revenue, but now because that passed, now, now we're just gonna go and make it unanticipated revenue. I mean, I, that, yeah, this doesn't sound kosher to me at all.
Bonnie?
I think it's a lousy option to have to lay off teachers. I, um... And I would wanna ask you to implore all of your, all of your knowledge and who you have available to you to see what's, what we can, I wanna make sure that, because we've already been told by legal counsel that we had to do it one way. I wanna make sure before we make another decision that we're doing it legally and that we're not gonna have ramifications from that.
So we're gonna spend more money on legal.
Well, how do you, then, then you look, I understand what you're saying, but you...
I don't think we should look to the federal government for anything myself, but...
Well, that's, three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars is a lot of money. And unless we look at you and say, where can we cut it? Without cutting teachers.
And I did contact legal to get their advice on this, that, can we do this? And I received the go-ahead and do it from legal, because I questioned it as well. However, I see it as an option in order to not lay off teachers because that is what we will have to do to come up with three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Now, it might not be the full three ninety-three because I estimated high on the two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. However, you're still looking at a substantial, a substantial reduction in the budget because the, the, what was voted on in Article Four is our cap for spending. That is our cap for spending and we know it takes more than that to operate this school. And in order to come up with that amount of money, you're talking about salaries. And what I'm proposing is an option to avoid a reduction, particularly impacting our Title One program with those students that need the additional support. And we're still required, regardless of whether we accept Title One monies or Title Two A monies, to provide those programs and that professional development. We still have to provide direct instruction to students that qualify for Title One. We still have to put monies aside for homeless students. We have to put money aside for private tutor, private school tutoring before and after school, parent involvement, supplies. And that's not written into the operating budget or is it included in the number that was voted in on Tuesday? So we're looking at a reduction.
Ralph?
I don't believe we have to look at a reduction. I, I agree that the things you're citing as necessities are there and they are necessary. But if the town has, or the district has budgeted X amount of money and at the end of, of a school year, the operating budget has a return of six hundred or eight hundred thousand dollars back to the town, we, we'll be all right if we're, if we're, if the town voters said no to an extra or, or four hundred thousand dollars out of the operating budget, remove that. And the town voters said that that's removed, in my opinion, I don't know, I'm not a, any kind of expert, but I believe that at the end of the year, if we've been returning half a million or six hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand dollars and haven't reduced any of our spending, you know, in fact, increased our spending, maybe we need to decrease spending on some things. But we're still returning money. May, all, all the end result, I think, next June thirtieth, is we're gonna have less money to return to the, to the town. Nobody's job is at risk. It's, it's crazy. It's...
Steve?
Well, you've already got the legal opinion. It won't cost us, therefore, it won't cost us any more money to get a legal opinion. I'd like a copy of the legal opinion, please.
So you would like for me to get that in a memo form?
What are you doing?
I didn't ask for a memo.
But it's gonna be in the bill, so we're getting copies of the bill, so we'll see it eventually. it eventually.
Well, we may not see, we, we'll see it as a dollar figure in the bill, but you're not going to see it as the legal opinion.
Mr. Tersy.
So, why wouldn't you believe me that our lawyer said that it was okay to do it? Why would...
Because I have a, the problem, because the lawyer began with, "You can't do it, because you have to do it this way." And now, because it didn't pass that way, now we're going back to what the lawyer said that we couldn't do in to begin with. So, to protect the taxpayers, I would like to make sure of, of what's going, you know, what, what's happening. Because I, I'm having a problem with, we were told that, I mean, there was a big to-do, was already spent, I don't know how much money on legal, because it, the, it was all at the Budget Committee. Budget Committee questioned it. "No, no, this is the way we got to do it. It's got to be anticipated. It was voted down as anticipate, well, now we'll just change it to unanticipated." Not to mention the fact that the voters voted no, so I would have a problem just telling the voters to go fly a kite and, and spend the money anyways.
Mr. Tersy.
My intention is to protect the students and the staff within this building from having a negative impact, from working knowingly in a deficit, which is what I'll be doing if we do not come up with that amount of money that we know we're going to be in deficit for starting the school year off. If you get a surplus at the end of the year, you're getting that through unanticipated revenues, such as we lose five high school students, which we already had ten taken out. You see that money as a return, as an unanticipated revenue. If we have a student that moves back into the district from an out-of-district placement at a hundred thousand dollars, that's an unanticipated revenue, which starts jacking your surplus right up. However, if you recall through the budget cycle, that budget was thin, and we came in lower than this year's budget. So, if we're budgeting well, you're not looking at a surplus, a substantial surplus to return back to the taxpayers. And what I'm looking at right now is an option, a potential solution, to make sure that students are not directly impacted by working in a deficit, knowingly working in a deficit. And I am not willing to work in a deficit, because we should not have to go back to the voters at some point and ask for more monies if we know that we're going to be spending over our budget. And we're going into July first knowing that we're spending over our budget. It's not right. And the only way to come up with monies of that degree is not nickel and dime in a supply line here and there, or a textbook here and there. It's through salaries.
I disagree.
And that's why I'm throwing the option out there. It's the board's decision. I, I firmly believe that you should give me approval to inform the Association of Potential Reduction in Force. And I will, if you don't want to have a public hearing, so be it. I've put the option out there on the table for you to consider. I'll be working, if you do give me that approval for the reduction in force, I'll be working specifically with the president of both associations to work together, as well as Mr. Gregoire, to bring the board proposal as to how we can find those monies. So, I presented it. I'll leave it up to you to make a decision.
Ralph.
Has our enrollment of students increased in the last year, or has it decreased?
At the high school level?
Up to K through twelve. There's a moment down...
We've had a minimal decrease.
A minimal decrease. So, if, in the twenty-four months prior to this coming budget end, we had, I just, I believe there's going to be less of a return to the town at the end of the operating season. I, I, it's just kind of, I don't know, I see it as, you know, I heard it, scare tactic. And that's what it seems to be. But, I mean, I, I sat on the Budget Committee for a while, and I, and I do believe that if the money, you can't punish teachers, because the town says, "Don't spend so much money."
Mr. Tersy.
If you pulled up that operating budget document, the worksheet, and you looked in there, could you find those monies? Could you find three hundred, let's say we get it to three hundred thousand dollars, could you find those monies?
Are there three hundred lines in that budget?
Probably more.
All right. I bet I could. Probably a thousand dollars out of each line.
The only lines you can control are your uncontrollable, are your controllable costs. Contractual salary obligations you can't control, health benefits you can't control, contracted services you can't control. So, you would have to minimize those lines to what you can actually control, and that's what you would be looking at, if you're not talking about salaries, which are minimal.
I'm willing to bet we could probably save fifty thousand in, in operating, uh, building and maintenance fairly easily, just by putting things out to bid. I know it's a drop in the bucket, but it's something.
Now, I'm sure I expressed my concern and offered solutions.
Thank you. Any thoughts?
I just don't like the, it seems like a threat, you know? Or it didn't get out, or it's going to cut jobs.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not a threat. It's our option.
It's not a realistic option. I mean, if the teachers are here, they're here for a reason, right? I mean, everybody has a job, because they're needed. There's no unnecessary or non-essential jobs in the school building, from what I understand.
Mr. Tersy.
Our Title One and our Title Two A funds, the majority of those funds are taken up by two salaried positions. If we are not accepting those federal funds, which make up the two hundred, two hundred-plus thousand dollars, there's two positions right there that aren't in our operating budget. That's a reduction in force.
But we represented to the voters that we are taking, that's gross budgeting. We, we represented to the voters on the, on the ballot that we're taking that money.
If we take those monies, then we have to find it in the budget.
If we take away those monies?
If we don't utilize those monies, okay? If we use those monies, then we're looking at taking those monies out of the operating budget, all of those lines we're referring to. We're capped at, was it eight point eight million dollars? That's what we have approval to spend. We know, in our estimates, and based on our current staffing, that it's above that number. So, I don't want to go into July first knowing that I don't have the money to pay for our current staffing levels. That's just bad business. That means starting your fiscal year knowing that you're going to be in debt, and you can't pay the people that you hired, which is bad business. And I'm offering a solution. If we get, if I get beat up over it, I get beat up over it. Bottom line, I'm keeping teachers in the building and walk, coming into July first with a comfort level that I won't have if we say, "Oh, we can operate without those monies."
So, your solution is to say that the federal Title One or Title Two A funds are unanticipated monies?
Correct.
That's your solution?
Because that's how we reported it on the Budget Committee Recommendation column of the MS twenty-seven that was, that was published, it was displayed, and the number that was voted on was the number at the bottom of that column. It's not listed as anticipated revenues, so we consider them unanticipated revenues, and we move forward.
Now, I'm starting to see the Budget Committee's argument. You know, why, so, I, I don't know. I mean, I...
We have, you need, you have to notify them by the April fifteenth? So, we have time. We have another meeting before that.
Correct. And I would have to come to you with a proposal.
At that next meeting.
At that next meeting. However, I, I highly recommend you give me the authority to at least notify the Association of a potential reduction in force, because I can't even have that conversation with the Association without that notification.
I'm wondering whether we should have this conversation with the Budget Committee.
It's a board decision at this point.
Can we table this decision until our next, until our first meeting in April?
That's what I just stay, asked, I said, stated, but...
I mean, I, I, I think, might have to work a little bit harder in the, in the time between that first meeting and April fifteenth, but I, I know I'd like to go over the budget lines and see, out of those three hundred or plus lines, where we can save and bring it to you. It, it, I think we have the ability to, to sharpen a pencil and, and make some, some cuts without cutting jobs.
If we give you the authority to talk to the Association, Michael, does that mean when you come back, you can give us a plan, detailed, black and white?
Yep. And what, absolutely. That's, that would allow us to at least present a plan based on following what our agreement is with the Association. I want to get the teachers' input. I want to get the paraprofessionals' input, because this could have an, an impact on the school in general. So, I want to work together to develop a plan, present that plan to the board at our first meeting in April. Without the authorization to notify for potential RIF, it's out of the question, because you won't have enough time between the, our first meeting in April fifteenth to determine what that would look like. I just want to cover our bases with what we agreed on with the Associations.
Ralph.
With the threat of a RIF, what, how would that ripple throughout the building? How many people would start going, "Hey, hey, buddy, how you doing?" And you know what that would do to the morale in the building?
It's already out there.
It's already out there. They're sitting here.
These people are sitting here.
When it's, when people know it's that amount of money, Ralph?
They know.
It's salaries.
It doesn't have to be salaries.
It's a plan. I think we should go ahead with it.
I, I make a motion to give Michael the authority to begin speaking to the Association, so we can get a firm, black and white. This is what we have for a plan.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
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 With the plan, I mean, I just don't want it to be a threat.
Opposed?
I'll vote in the affirmative.
Yeah, me too.
Please, Michael, proceed without...
I will. Thank you. We could probably get the things together.
Yes, I mean, we...
Right, and we could look at it.
I should.
Yeah, I would highly recommend that the board looks at that budget as well. But we're fortunate right now, because if you look at the reduction of the ten students, our enrollment at high school is down by seven students. So, we're, we're looking at three, three students right now, which is around thirty-eight thousand dollars.
No cuts.
However, that's a gamble, because if we get, which we could gamble with, because we, if we get a couple students here and there, we're looking at twenty-four thousand dollars compared to two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. So, there is some wiggle room. However, thank you for the authority to at least have the conversation and notify the union. It's not a threat. It's, it's being proactive as to what could potentially happen. Thank you. It's all had him out. Madam Chair.
Trying to get, what, you said, when, when is competency-based education going to start? Three years, and that would be eighteen?
I believe it's eighteen, two thousand eighteen.
The September of two thousand eighteen?
I don't know the specific month, but I know it would give...
The start of school, and of two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
And is this a law? Is it mandated? Is it a rule that we have to do this?
It's an educational, it's a, it's a, one of the rules and regulations that govern public schools. ED three oh six is the rules and regulations for minimum standards for school approval.
That's New Hampshire statute? That's in New Hampshire or federal?
It's a rule.
It's a rule.
It's a rule by appointed people.
Which is your State Board of Education, which has the authority to establish rules.
Unelected.
Yeah, that's, I have a problem with that. I mean, you, you, we certainly don't want competency-based education. That's even worse than Common Core. But the problem is, is that these, these decisions are being made by people who are appointed. They're not elected, so they, they, they just do whatever they want. And there's no, no repress from the people in their schools. That's the problem, but, so it's ED three oh six rule.
New business? Two thousand fifteen, sixteen school calendar?
Madam Chair, on page twenty-nine, you'll see the draft calendar for two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Once again, I had the pleasure of working with Teachers Association regarding this. Staff were able to provide input, and Mr. Gregoire was able to provide some input, just for your review this evening. If you have, would suggest any changes to it, we can have that discussion. I'm bringing this forward to you for your approval.
Steve.
President's Day? Oh, President's Day?
It's not on here, Mr. Brown.
Once again, the founding father of civil rights is not, not recognized. It's...
No, it is January eighteenth, Civil Rights Day.
The founding father of civil rights.
Thomas Paine?
No.
John Locke?
President Lincoln.
Certainly, suggestions, revisions?
I have none.
Just no snow days in June. Yes, pending any snow days next year. We're looking at June sixteenth as our last day, as an early release. And once again, we're fortunate that we can have the, have four days of professional development prior to the start of school, prior to the start of students coming to school. Very well. Very well.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand fifteen, sixteen calendar?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is residency form update, just so you can give the board an update as to where we are. We were able to believe the last report was forty-eight residency forms we still had out. We're down to thirty-one now. I have Wayne Robinson knocking on the doors again. I have, I spoke with, with Mr. Robinson, and out of the thirty-one, I, he, he knows that fifteen of them are known residents. They just haven't gotten their forms in, after several times going to their places, giving them the forms, even offering to take pictures of, you know, justify, justifications such as bills and so forth, which sort of leaves us with sixteen unknown. However, it doesn't mean that we aren't looking to, to receive these forms. So, I wanted to let the board know that I have put in a phone call, as well as an email to Superintendent Hopkins, requesting if we can move forward with withholding student registration for courses for next year, which they're starting right now, until these forms are submitted. So, once I get the, the, you know, him and I have that conversation, then I'll start making phone calls to, to basically say to these families that your student will not be able to register for courses for next year if you do not provide us with the required documentation.
Is that combined?
What?
Thirty-one, is that spot... Thirty-one, is that spalling in fall school?
No, that's just high school.
That's just fall?
So that's an update at this point. I'm looking forward to hearing back from Superintendent Hopkins, and unfortunately, it's not, it's the last thing I want to do, but we've put out two letters, we have had the Truman Officer go to the doors, and now, basically without any teeth, such as holding a registration for courses for next year, there's nothing stating that they-
But you can't actually do that, can you?
From, from signing up for courses? We're not denying an education, we're just saying you're not going to go through the registration process for next year until those forms come in. So as I said, it's not something I want to do. So that's, that's the update, residency forms.
Cafe Services letter?
Mm-hmm. This is the amended letter, based on our last meeting. Are there any suggestions or revisions that you might see here?
Bonnie?
I guess I just have one in the letter, and I, I think the letter is better, but when it says we urge you to take advantage of our prepayment plan, I, I don't know, I hate to say at this point in the year that you maybe, it could be that we need to put the My School Bucks or whatever program we use in there, so that they have an avenue to look so that they can do that. Do you know what I mean? Because maybe they just don't understand that they can go and then, and put fifty dollars in an account ahead of time. I, I, I mean, it's definitely advertised, but is that something that's necessary or not?
Look, if we're saying it here, that we recommend they can do that.
I know, but what if they still don't know about it?
We're recommending, I see the need for that, and I think it's just how we facilitate that.
Mr. Tursey?
So for clarification, just referencing that you can access the electronic version of your account and input monies that way?
Yep.
That's a good idea.
Because they can, like, check their status. Like, if they go online, you can know what your kids had for lunch, right down to the, right down to the apples. And so, say there's miscommunication, because they want three chocolate milks rather than a lunch, or they want whatever. The parents are going to be able to see exactly what the child or children have eaten.
Okay. Other than that, does it look okay? And if we put that reference in there, is it-
That's what we said.
Could send that out?
Yes.
Okay.
Looks logical.
All right, thank you. Next on your agenda, you'll see that there's the draft letter regarding parent notification for the tuition for non-disabled students in our preschool program. That's policy JFAD. The one part of this letter that wasn't discussed at the board level was regarding that the, the current students that are enrolled, non-disabled students that are enrolled are guaranteed a spot for next year.
There, but they'll have to pay tuition.
Correct. But I don't recall having that conversation at the board level.
I don't think we talked about that.
So that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. I feel it's appropriate to do that. I mean, they're part of the program now, you don't want to say you have to become part of the lottery. It's similar to what we do at the high school level. Once you're approved and you're in, you don't become a part of the lottery for the next year. So is okay to send this letter out by consensus?
Should we approve the policy first? Good point, Bonnie.
We should probably approve your policy before you-
Okay. Would you like to move to that policy?
Can I just ask a question? Would you read the letter? I think we need to also somehow inform preschool parents or parents of potential preschool based, that it's a tuition base. So is that something that we, you want us to put in the Wakefield Weekly, or how we make those kids, those parents wear tuition? Kids that are late, that are not in the program, that are thinking-
This is an option?
Right. I think we need to let them know that the option is now tuition-based.
Mr. Tursey?
I would say a notice in the Wakefield Weekly, because that goes home to the majority of the families. And that word will, that word will spread. I don't know how we would get that out to-
PEG.
Maybe.
Bonnie?
You, when you're doing your-
Child fine.
Child fines, you can acknowledge that way. Some preschool parents, it might be their first time experiencing preschool, so they're not going to get a Wakefield Weekly coming home. So that's not going to be a good, it's going to be a good avenue for existing families, but new families, it's not going to touch. And PEG channel is also great, but if you have DirecTV, you don't get the PEG channel. So I don't know if, maybe if, as they call, you can, as they apply, you can say, please understand that, you know, in your option, this is a tuition-based program now.
You can, you can get the PEG channel even if you have DirecTV.
You can?
Yes.
How do you do that?
On, on the internet.
Oh, that's right.
There's a, what is it? C C three TV dot com or something?
What is that?
You, you, anybody-
Priscilla should know.
I don't know about DirecTV.
No, no, the, the-
The website?
Yes.
Where you can watch the videos?
Yes, on the website.
That's just Clearview-
CCTV three, isn't it?
Yes.
C C three TV?
CCTV three.
CCTV three dot com.
Not that you need to know.
Want to say I do know for Time Warner Cable, if you have basic cable, you can't get the PEG channel.
If you go on their website, you, you can watch it on, on their website.
But not every parent may have a website. This is-
Well, no, it may not, but-
Household. So, just be aware.
So we can look away, is it getting it out?
We'll have to.
We'll make, we'll make sure we provide notice if it's child fine. We'll put it in the Wakefield Weekly and then just help with, I don't know.
Yeah, we want to move on policy JFAD tuition.
Do you have a comment on that policy?
Yeah, I'm just introducing it, Priscilla.
Okay, I just have something to say.
Okay. Can I say it first?
Sure.
Thanks. JFAD tuition expenses for non-disabled preschool students for the second reading? We're moving it ahead so we can coincide with the letter if everybody's following me. Do you have something?
I was just waiting for the public input back.
Now, public input. Priscilla?
I just wondered how the tuition money will be accounted for. Will that go into enterprise fund, or offset revenues, or spent, or general fund? Just how, what are you going to do with the money when it comes in?
Mr. Tursey?
Comes in as unanticipated revenue. It's reported as a revenue, on the revenue side of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Help offset that deficit, wouldn't it?
Anyone else? Nothing? Guys?
I'll make a motion to approve JFAD as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we can look for consensus on the letter.
Okay, going back to the letter, is everything?
I concur.
Everyone's good? Bob? Steve? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. EFA meal policy for the first reading?
So you can see where there's strike-throughs and bold italicized words are the recommended amendments from our last meeting.
Make a motion to move policy EFA forward for a second reading.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. JICDD, student discipline out of school actions for the first reading?
Speak to this one.
Certainly.
At the last meeting, I suggested that we take this back and look at some revisions to what we currently would be doing for discipline referrals, as well as suspensions. And you can see that we added in through our conversation last, last meeting, where anywhere there was some sort of notification or notify that the parents and guardians were included in that policy. So that's where you'll see we, we changed the word dismissal to expulsion, because that's the actual term that's used. So, once again, you see wherever there's a bold italicized wording is what's new.
Ralph?
If this is forwarded for a second reading, it would be the next reading, all of the strike-throughs would be gone and the new wording would be inserted.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to move this forward to a second reading. Policy JICDD.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. JIK, pupil safety and violence prevention bullying. For the first reading.
This is not currently in our policy manual?
No, this will replace the current policy. So if this policy makes it through the second reading as an approved policy, we'll also be requesting of the board to remove the current policy if this passes.
But it's encompassing, I think that's, and this is recommended by NHSBA.
I make a motion-
Multi-tile.
I make a motion to move forward to the second reading with JICD. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ralph?
No, I have to second it.
Policy DJE, bidding requirements for the second reading?
I'll open up the public comment.
I am.
Sorry.
That's okay. Any public comments? Okay. None?
I'll make a motion to approve policy DJD as written.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Policy BDG, school attorney, this is for review. Excuse me? I don't know.
Did someone else to put it on for a specific reason?
I don't believe I asked for this specific policy, but as I read it, it seems to be a logical policy as it's written. It doesn't seem to allow any single board member to cost the district money by acting individually. And it doesn't seem to prohibit the board from allowing the superintendent to contact the legal, which I don't think we, I don't think we need to prohibit the superintendent from seeking legal, uh, legal aid. I don't see any problem with it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This came on the agenda as a request from our last meeting. So it was discussed at the last meeting, but then has to be put on the agenda for review. So you could review it, maybe affirm it if that's how you feel, without any change in-
I'll make a motion to reaffirm BGD, BDG.
Yes.
On the second paragraph, assistants may be on behalf of the school board instead of in. The first line, the second paragraph.
Decision lets you clean the vice chair assistants on behalf. That's good, good snag. I'll second Bonnie's motion with the amendment to reaffirm the policy BDG.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. VCA, school board member ethics for review?
I know I requested this particular policy to be addressed for review. And I, I would like to know the board's opinion on the spirit and the intent of this policy. If I could get every member's opinion, just on the intent of the policy, I'd be satisfied at this point.
Anybody have any comments?
I commented earlier. I was hoping to get school board member opinion on the intent of it. That's my comment. Andrew Holmes to inject any opinion or insight?
No, please, give us some insight, Ralph.
I'm hoping, I've already said I'm hoping, I understand what the policies have. I'm hoping for other people's comments.
This is the third time this policy has been on this agenda?
Is it?
Yes.
On this agenda?
On our agenda. This is the third time, I believe, that this policy has been put on the agenda for discussion.
And we've discussed it three times?
Yeah, so is there any clear indication as to why you keep putting this back on the agenda?
Maybe, I don't feel as though all, all school board members abide by this policy.
I agree. Not all school board members do abide by this policy. Would you like to give us some examples?
Well, standing, well-
Please.
My latest example, I guess, would be March thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, I received a text from you stating that, that- My latest example, I guess, would be March thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, I received a text from you stating that, that, that I'm violating policies and you, you seemed to feel as though you needed to make, make an issue of it.
I am going to make an issue of it, as a matter of fact. I'm going to ask for a formal resignation from you, Ralph.
Oh.
For divulging non-public information.
Really? And when did I divulge non-public?
August of, it was in and around August two thousand thirteen.
And what is?
You divulged it to myself and two other private citizens. I wasn't on the board at that time.
Okay, and what was?
And I can't bring it up, but I do have facts to support it.
Okay.
But they can't be done in public. It's a private citizen.
This non-public information was in a, in a non-public meeting?
It's, I didn't see it in any public meetings.
Are you talking?
And since myself and two other people weren't privy to the non-public meetings, I'm thinking it was non-public information. And I went back and reviewed the tapes for clarification, didn't see it.
So I, you're saying that I gave you information from a non-public meeting?
Yes, I'm saying that.
Well, I would have to ask you to prove that.
And I can prove that.
Okay, and once you do prove that, I will consider a resignation, but I don't believe I'll be resigning.
Okay, so how do we want to move forward with this? Because I can ask for the board to vote to have legal, take it to superior, and turn over what I have.
That's fine.
Because I can't put it into public.
That's fine, if you'd like to do that.
Then that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay.
Can I get a motion, please, to contact legal regarding the removal of Ralph Fogg for handing out non-public information to myself as a private citizen and it to at least two other people?
Point of order.
Go ahead.
You need proof to do that.
I have proof.
We need to see it before we vote on anything.
You can't bring the proof into, into public because it concerns private citizens.
We need the proof before we can vote on expending other people's money. You, what was this, the continuation of the witch hunt here or what?
What would you like me to do? Turn it over to the attorney? And she can turn it over to you because I'm not bringing it over to public.
The board needs this, but then you do it in non-public.
Then that's fine, we'll do it in your.
You certainly can't ask for a vote to expend other people's money before we have any proof what you're saying.
That's fine. Yes, Ralph?
I, I see your reaction as something that is another act of a cover-up. I think that your, your intent right now is to distract attention from the board members' conduct that I've already addressed earlier in this meeting.
No, it's not, Ralph.
I believe it is.
And you believe that, and I believe what I want.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, we'll hold a non-public session. I'll let everyone be informed and then we can make a decision going from there.
I look forward to that information being shared.
Thank you.
So you're gonna place that on the next agenda?
I certainly will.
I hope you're specific.
I'm very specific.
Because I believe, I asked you the question that I indulged to you, information that happened in a non-public meeting.
You did.
Just so that we know that that's what you.
Well, it wasn't made public, so it's gotta be non-public, correct? All right.
It had to have happened in a non-public meeting, yes.
Right, because it didn't concern, it wasn't you privately, so it couldn't have been public. It couldn't, it had to have been non-public.
Perfect.
Mr. Tersi, could you place that on the agenda, please?
We done with B A?
Yes.
B C A?
Yes, unless you have anything else.
Well, I, I would ask that, that, um, you don't text me messages that, that seem to me to be threatening in order to.
I said, I told you.
Silence a board member.
No, I asked you and you said, let's talk about this. So I said, okay, we'll talk about this. That was it, Ralph. So.
Well, we'll share the, we'll share the texts.
This is non-public.
We can. K H, public solicitations in schools. Go ahead, please.
I think we need to strike superintendent and/or principal from the policy and leave it to the board to make any exceptions.
Is that a motion?
I think, I'll make that a motion. I think the, the intent, the intent of the policy is clear and I, I think that it would be best served if it was the board only that made any exceptions. Because I think the, the intent and the spirit of the policy is clear, so I would make the motion to strike superintendent and/or principal from policy K H.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
What's the purpose of doing this, with this one?
Well, because some board members may be able to gain financially by the way this policy is written currently.
Can you explain that?
I can't see that.
Um, if a commercial enterprise enters the building and makes a sale of goods or services on the premises and that person just goes to the principal or the superintendent for permission, but that person happens to be married to a school board member, I think that's, that's a problem.
Bonnie?
I don't, I guess, I don't understand why that's.
A problem?
Well, no, I guess, I don't understand why it's a problem now, but it hasn't been a problem for the past fifteen years. I mean, I think that, I think that there are companies that come into this building all the time to sell product or get donations. You have Little Caesars, you have Girl Scouts, we have Breakfast with Santa, we have the Scholastic Book.
Breakfast with, Breakfast with Santa is a pretty good example, actually.
Actually, I don't profit from Breakfast with Santa, so it's a nonprofit organization and I don't see any of the monies.
It's a nonprofit organization, a five oh one C three?
It is, it's under the Wakefield Parks and Rec.
Aye.
All the proceeds go to Wakefield Parks and Rec. Hmm?
I said, that's a caveat, I think, but.
I think it's a great program that's benefited the people in this town for years.
All I'm saying is that some people may be abusing this policy.
I think some people are just cranky and mean.
Go ahead, Steve.
But Bonnie, you made the statement that this has been happening for fifteen years that.
My goodness.
Wait a minute, can I finish my, may I finish or we go back to interrupting again?
Please.
That this has been happening for fifteen years, so whatever you'd like to call it, family members, spouses, or school board members have been coming into the building and do, for the last fifteen years and selling goods or services or soliciting or whatever? That's been happening for fifteen years? In violation of the policy?
It's not, I, oh, I can't understand, and I'm not saying, people have been coming into this building and selling goods since the conception of the school. It just, now that, now that it's.
Now that a school board member's spouse is allowing that school board member to gain financially.
She's getting permissions and she's asked by the staff to come in. So if our superintendent and principal has no problem with this, no one's saying that she, the said person, has to buy anything, but the staff are asking for her to come in, why should things have to change? Now, it's, he's not making the decision. I would think it would be more of a conflict of interest if they were making the decision to have their spouse in. I think it's great that, that, that the administration is making the decision.
It's personal.
It's, it's, right now, you're, it's personal and petty.
Can you, can you tell me, Mr. Gregoire, how many other people have enjoyed coming in here and making monies?
As Ms. Shear pointed out, we have Scholastic Books, we have Little Caesars, we have Books are Fun, we have Grand Canyon University, we have Phoenix have come in. Ms. Willet, Mrs. Willet has come in to do that, but we've had, doing this, I think would impact all of those sales.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
But the problem is when, if a school board member is, is receiving a financial gain, that's the problem. And apparently, that's been going on for fifteen years.
I don't receive it anyway. Well, I'll tell you that, this is true.
I'm glad it's a joke. I'm glad it's funny.
It's personal, it's definitely personal.
It's personal.
It's a policy that.
Yes.
You taking public comments on, on this policy as well?
Yes.
Um, I, I just wanted to note that when I started here, and I think maybe Mr. Gregoire wasn't aware of this, I'm not sure if he overlapped, but we did have a teacher that made jewelry, that would sell jewelry around the holidays, and that was something that was, was sort of just positive feeling in the building, that people kind of felt like they had first refusal of. I also know that, you know, nobody's being pressured to buy anything. You know, we do have staff members that do things outside of school, like, you know, like Sensi or things like that, that are often, you know, in the teacher's room, as, you know, obviously people are for benefit financially from that, but, you know, it's just sort of a community building piece, just for what it's worth to have the, the sort of teacher's perspective on what's going on.
Thank you.
And they're all married to board members?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, there's no difference there, I guess.
Yeah.
Sandy, that's Sandy.
Wife works here and you make money off of that, am I right? Does your wife work here?
She's employed here, yes.
That's right, so you're making a financial gain off of the school, aren't you?
No, I'm not.
You are.
Neither am I.
Okay, and the other thing, the other thing is, the Santa breakfast is, has nothing to do with the school. We borrowed the building, which is a town building.
Which is.
Is a town building and Santa breakfast is Parks and Rec, nothing else, not seeing any Barney shop.
Really?
So you need to get off your crap because you're the ones who are making this all personal. And if I come here, I've been coming here way before Mr. Gregoire was here, way before my husband was on the board.
Sandy.
Way before, and it was okay when you guys liked me, but now you don't, so you're gonna go after me because of this policy? That's what it is, and you're gonna hurt other people because of it, because you're, you have a personal vendetta, period.
What are the, what are the other folks that come in here and?
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
What are the other folks that come in here and raise money? Do their monies go to anything particular or just their business?
Some of the monies go to the school, some of the monies go to the different classes that may be having a fundraiser, some monies go to the private companies such as Phoenix or Grand Canyon University. I think it's a pretty wide, no, reg.
Teachers lounge, where no kids can sit.
What's that?
The point I wanted to make is that it's the teachers, the kids don't have access to this. It's us buying, not the students.
Mr. Tersi?
I think any event that's gonna build positive morale and benefit the staff is really not of a question. If, you know, if it makes the staff feel good, if it's benefiting the school, which ultimately benefits students, there's, there's not a question in my mind. Things that I feel would, might, that might have a negative impact on the staff, morale, students specifically, it's not a question to deny that. But for things that have become somewhat of a tradition for the good of the school and the good of the community, it's not a question in my book.
Not to mention I volunteer painting the walls and everything else too. It's not like I just take, Ralph, I give back.
Well, I'm wondering, you know, I mean, what good for the school or the community does it, did it provide, your services, I mean, when you came in?
Um, have you not heard of Sandy Willet and me by C D L that if you seem to like and buy stuff from me, whether I'm in here or not? People ask me, I didn't ask to come here, people asked me to come here.
So, people asked you to come here and then you went to?
I went to the principal, asked permission, like you're supposed to do, all the way back to Mr. Troy.
Okay.
And nobody had a problem with it except you now, because it's personal now.
Actually, I, I think you.
So you didn't have a, you didn't have a problem with it last year when I did it and your wife buys stuff for me, and the year before that, and the year before that. You didn't have a problem with it then.
Sandy, I think you brought this policy to my attention because you'd said it was there, that, and people in the past board made an issue of it because you were doing that.
They did, and then if you read it, the, but why are you bringing it up now, Ralph? It didn't, you were on my side then.
I'm always on your side, Sandy.
You're always on my side, yeah.
Yeah. I wanna know if this policy is, is fair and if it allows.
It is fair.
It is?
Yeah, because anybody could do it if they asked, and I did the right things, the protocol I was supposed to do.
Is there a motion on the floor?
There is, there is a motion, second on the floor.
Can you repeat the motion for us, please?
Sure.
Is that okay if I ask?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Steve made a motion to strike the wording superintendent and/or principal from the policy. And I could be wrong, but I believe Bob seconded for discussion.
I did, I did.
Ralph did.
Ralph did, okay. I knew I was wrong.
Okay, so move the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Bonnie?
Can I make a motion to reaffirm K H?
You certainly can. Can I get a second? Um, I'll second that.
For discussion?
For discussion.
Nobody sees a problem with school board members lying in their pockets.
Yeah, I make millions of.
She's not a school board member.
No, you are.
Yeah, but I don't get any of it now.
Yes, separate account, you wanna go check? Can I move the question?
Go ahead, Steve.
I just think it, it just, it, there's an intent in a, in a spirit of this policy and I don't think that it's being followed at this point, and that's, what, what would be the problem with having the board give the, give the exception? I, I don't see the problem.
The first line of the policy is pretty clear.
You already voted on it?
Yeah, and now the vote is to reaffirm.
Ralph, can we stop, please?
I'm just looking at the intent of the policy.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first and a second to reaffirm. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Yes.
I missed it, was B C A reaffirmed or there was any action on?
There was no action on that, that was.
That was threat, counter-threat.
It is a reaffirmed.
B C, yeah, it was, it was.
It's been reaffirmed recently, like, like three, four weeks ago?
No, I didn't, I didn't hear any action on it, that's why I questioned.
No, like, when it was, no, not on this time, but before it was.
Right, that's why I asked.
You know, we were just having a laugh.
Okay. Policy K F, community use of school facilities.
And I was concerned about this one because it doesn't seem as though we're, we're seeing a whole harmless form in, in the events that are happening. Part eleven of that seemed to me to be when you're using the words must and shall and stuff like that. And, you know, again, I'm not against the run, I'm not against the dance or anything like that, but if, community use of the school facilities, it says, Wakefield School Board shall make the facilities available to responsible community residents as, as is practical.
Mr. Tersi?
We're covered under our liability insurance if there was any type of event, harm, damage, whatever that might be.
So.
Just wanna reiterate that fact.
So we should strike part eleven out of there? I mean, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying that if, if something was to happen, we're covered by it.
And what's the aggregate on that?
Insurance, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, probably make sure that we had enough then.
When an organization comes in and the janitor's being used and stuff like that, that's just, I guess if, if the school board has. the school board has no responsibility or liability, and the town has no liability of anything that may happen, if nobody worries about it other than me, it's a non-issue. But when it says the custodian is to be used at all times, to me, that's a cost to the taxpayers.
Bonnie?
Can, when you have an outside entity come in, do they fill out a form?
There's a protocol, uh, when, what, the costs are per event, whether it's a half day or a full day, if we need a janitor, if they have to use a kitchen, and we need to access to cafe services, the whole protocol and procedure.
So you following this policy to the best of your abilities?
Yes.
I make a motion to reaffirm K F.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bobby?
You, I think that...
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure.
We're in favor of the policy, we're just not in favor of some folks that don't go by the policy.
Mr. Tursi?
Before we move on to item F, uh, I would just like to make a recommendation, since we're covering policies at a full board meeting, that we limit the number of policies to two or three policies for an agenda, an agenda that might be one agenda per month, just so that we can move our meetings through efficiently.
I'll make that motion.
I'm seconding it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just for clarification, two or three policies per meeting?
No, per one meeting a month.
Per one meeting a month?
So you don't have policies on every agenda?
So it'd be every other agenda?
Which would provide for a systematic review of policies, unless there was a policy that needed to be reviewed because of a situation or an issue that we need to tackle.
So...
I mean, there's exceptions to that, obviously.
Possibly thirty-six policies reviewed a year. How many policies are there?
A lot.
So we might, during the term of a member, we'll address maybe a hundred and...
Can we bump that up a little bit?
I'm just making a recommendation to minimize the number.
Three total policies per...
Three a month, that, yeah, but that's not three per agenda, it's three...
That's three per every other meeting, so it's a month.
Right, three, three a month, that's not a lot.
Bonnie?
I'm just gonna say this from when I was on the policy committee, um, now and then is what we did is, every year, a couple times a year, the New Hampshire School Board Association sends out their changes of policy. We would go over the policy, any policy that hadn't been reaffirmed or touched within the last few years, we would make a decision going forward as the policy committee, which ones of those held precedence, like the J I C K. The only policy that's replacing is passe now, so you have to move forward with doing one. But that came as a recommendation last fall, this past fall, from the New Hampshire School Board Association to reevaluate that. So how we always did it was that way, and if something came up that was precedent, then it got put on as well.
And what did we do? Like, when we did policy meetings, I think it was, what, three?
Two or three.
Two or three, every, every meeting, and that's how it was done, so it's just practical.
Two or three every meeting is six a month, but we wanna reduce it to three a month.
No.
Policies, Mr. Fogg, used to be once a month, like facilities.
For an hour.
Mm-hmm. We did a lot of work at home, and then we'd bring it, we, we would come prepared and go over multiple policies if need be.
Okay.
I don't... Was there a motion?
That was them.
Well, Norman made the motion to have two to three policies on one agenda per month. Bonnie seconded it. And we started the vote, and then Ralph seconded it.
I did.
So...
I thought I could answer.
All in favor?
All.
Aye.
I'll oppose that one.
I'm, I'm opposed all of them.
Smarter Balance assessments?
I'd like to, um, just not do the assessment. Can we use knee, uh, kneecap instead of smarter balance?
Yes, sir. Kneecap's not available anymore.
Well, it is available, but we're just not allowed to use it?
It's not our state assessment.
With the exception of science, I'm sorry.
Correct.
I mean, I'd like to just, it's, it's not a good tabo. Then I, I will make a motion that, uh, a refusal form goes home to all parents.
I'll second that.
This smarter balance assessment.
I'll second that for discussion.
I have a, an example of a refusal form. Anybody would like? My phone, I'd say. That's what, an ed rule, Mr. Tursi?
What's that?
Smarter Balance is mandated by an ed rule?
It's mandated by an RSA, not an ed rule.
Do you happen to have that off the top of your head?
It's the requirement for participating in the state assessment. I wanna say it's a one ninety-three.
Ninety-three is on...
Yeah, don't quote me on that. I can probably figure that out. One ninety-three dash C, colon, six. Again, I'll reiterate the fact that we do not have the authority.
But the parents do, and it's the, the whole point of the exercise, to remind the parents that they have the legal right to refuse assessments, especially when it's psychological in nature, psychometric testing, assessment rather. Parents do have the right.
I'm Chair Matt.
Go ahead.
If we send this out as a school, then, again, we are providing, basically stating that, um, we do have the authority to promote, um, students opting out of the smarter balanced assessment, and we do not have that authority. And I highly recommend that we do not do this.
To remind them. So I know, I know you don't like it, but, you know, the parents need to be reminded that they are, they, they have the, still have the legal authority over their children, and not the Department of New Hampshire Department of Ed. And all parents need to refuse this assessment, because it's not good.
Bob?
I, I, I agree with this, but I understand what Mr. Tursi's saying. If the school cannot send this out through the school, we have to have another avenue.
Well, rather than...
I don't know, that's what I'm trying to think myself.
Mr. Tursi?
As I stated earlier, I'd recommend we take it on as an individual basis. Those parents that are, you know, gonna follow through with this, already have that understanding, and will address it at the school level.
Ralph?
I remember talking some time ago about, um, when you were trying to get the community involved in, in the vision and all that. Uh, one comment from me came about, um, encouraging our students to have independent thought and individualism. Can you tell me how the smarter balanced assessment encourages independent thought and individualism?
I have to think about that one, Ralph. It's more of a philosophical answer to that question. You know, independent thought and reflection comes anytime that you answer a question on a test. How you're gonna answer that question.
Or...
Particularly on a language arts question, where you have to draft an essay that's independent thought, based on a prompt.
Or is, or is the answer to the assessment based on what they remember, what they've been taught? You know, do they remember what they were given to...
That's, that's part of it as well, absolutely. But assessments in general don't impede independent, independent thought in the sense that it impacts how they're going to operate in the future. It's a snapshot of what their thoughts are at the time, based on prompts.
And it might not impede them, but does it encourage, you know...
Bob?
What I don't like, and tell me if I'm wrong here, it's, uh, two hours for twelve weeks, two hours each day for twelve weeks? Two hours a week, for twelve weeks, right? The window is twelve weeks, so that's four days, basically, of this testing.
No.
No?
Uh...
Mary can answer that. Four days per student, right?
It's a total of four days, but it's only two hours per day, for four days for each grade level.
Mm-hmm. So each student is four days worth of testing?
Two hours.
Two hours per day. We had that...
But over the whole timeframe, I'm saying.
This actually is a smaller amount of time than kneecap, than we took for the kneecap for each student. It is a shorter amount of time than kneecap wants for each student.
Okay, I was under the impression it was about four days per, per student, for the whole test to be complete.
If, and that's, that's a recommend, recommended allotment of time, is the two hours. Yeah, some students will finish earlier than that, so on the max amount of time, each student would, um, participate in this assessment for eight hours, over four days.
Up to four days, basically.
Up to four, up to eight hours.
Okay, total, okay.
And, and this is just one assessment? How many other assessments are being given?
We assess using Ames Web, which is a, a quick assessment. We assess using N W E A, which ranges anywhere from forty-five minutes to sixty minutes per test. And then obviously classroom assessments that are happening all the time.
But aren't there up to seven assessments per year that are given to the children?
No. If you look at it this year, you have Ames Web, N W E A, Smarter Balanced, and our eighth graders participated in the NAEP assessment. That's four.
And we'll have the kneecap science.
And kneecap science, which is five. Four, not...
Just two, two grade levels.
I think there's not too much assessment and not enough education.
You can't collect data without...
Well, that's what this is. The federal government started Smarter Balanced.
Old business?
Oh, um...
Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, well, but, so we didn't, I believe that there was a motion and a second on the floor.
Oh, that's right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We can't do this.
Right.
You have the authority as a local school board, you've been elected, you have the authority. You choose to, you can vote it down. That's no problem.
I wanna do the right thing, Ralph, that's what I'm saying.
I understand. But what's going on is...
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, old business?
Just have one thing, Madam Chair, just to go back on the manifest. So how would the board like for me to proceed on that one invoice if I do find out that the, the contractor is certified to do that type of work? Pay the invoice, or does that have to come back to the board? How do we get this invoice resolved?
Pretty sure we were told that the contractor was not a qualified licensed gas technician.
Gas veteran, isn't he?
So if so, oh, sorry, Bonnie.
But he's a business, so that doesn't mean that he doesn't, and I don't, it doesn't mean that he doesn't have one working for him.
That's...
So I don't know which personnel came into the building on that one particular thing, but I don't know who his employee go.
Bob?
And the reason I brought this up to, to talk about, or to, to look into is, it didn't actually say he actually did pipe fitting in gas. He worked on it, but did he, did he open up the lines and do the pipe fitting? It doesn't actually say that.
Yeah, that's, my, through the investigation piece, how, I just need clarification, how to proceed. Does the invoice have to come back to the board because it wasn't approved? Or do I have the approval to move forward on paying the invoice? I just don't wanna hold up the invoice if there was somebody that came in here that...
Wouldn't that have to go through a manifest?
So hold the check to the next manifest? Is that...
Well, wouldn't it have to go through the manifest? Right now, it's not, hasn't, it's not part of this manifest, so...
It would be the next one.
I would think it would have to be a part of a manifest, because if you start approving invoices that aren't part of an invo, um, a manifest, you know, you know, I'm not, but you don't, you don't know what other invoices could, you know. I, I think it would be cleaner if it was done through a manifest.
I think that's what we said anyways.
Okay, just looking to see how to proceed, because if I found out tomorrow morning that it was, everything was, was fine in the sense that the person working on it was certified, what, do I hold that check for two weeks until the manifest is approved? That's all I needed to know.
Look, looking through the manifest and the, and the, and the bills and the checks and all that stuff, if we have a question on something like that, I think we should have the right to find out information before we actually pay that bill.
Sure.
You know, and, and if we need to take it out of the, the manifest payables, basically, we should have a right to do that.
Yep.
We do.
Okay.
We do, but I think the point I was, it's dangerous to not, to start paying invoices that are not part of the manifest. Because one, once you approve one, then you can, you know, it just, it's much cleaner to have it as a part of the...
Thanks for the clarification.
All in invoices.
Did I clarify?
Very much so.
Okay. Correspondents? Oh, old business. Get jumbled around tonight. No correspondence? Comments by the public?
You never answered my question of why we're moving forward to withdraw from the S A U. I haven't gotten a good reason.
Ralph?
Because that's what the legislative body voted.
That's, but what made you decide that? That's what I wanna know.
The, the issue was on the ballot, and the majority of the voters said to not accept the withdrawal.
You're still, but they need the question.
No.
I wanna know what makes you think you can do a better job than we're already in?
Well, we don't have the answers to those questions until we able to go forward and fix the planning committee. You know, the next, next step is to do the S A U planning committee and...
But you have to have some reason of why you're moving that way, and I'm not hearing a good explanation.
The only reason I can come up with myself personally, I don't know about the whole board, but, but...
I'd like to know the board's version, not yours.
Okay, thank you.
My next question is, um, if you wanna be on the, on the, um, planning committee as a member of the, of the resident, how do you apply?
Mr. Tursi?
Then I'm not sure at this point. All through the moderator, I believe.
Through the moderator?
Through the moderator?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, does the, uh, superintendent ever have any discretionary funds that he can use without having to come to the board? None. Has it ever been considered, and why not? Why or why not?
Go ahead.
Can I answer that, Madam Chair? I understand your question. First of all, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna have discretionary funds. Um, I'd wanna work within the lines that have been approved as part of our budget. Discretionary funds... Discretionary funds in general are open to interpretation as to how you spend them, and I think that just working through our approved operating budget worksheet, um, is the best way to go, most transparent way to do that.
But, you know, when things, you know, have to be repaired in the school immediately, and you have to get, you have to have the funds somewhere, I mean, I know that in Dover they had a limit, it wasn't very much, I think it was five thousand dollars that the superintendent could use, and, and up to that amount, if something came up that they need, you know, between board, board meetings, he was at the discretion to use.
I can, um, I think in reg, in regards to your first question, I think that all individual board members might have had their own reason for choosing to go to withdrawal, and I don't know if you want to hear personal reasons, I can tell you that my reasoning is that Milton and Wakefield are going on a different educational avenue, they are going towards Common Core, we are going, and you might not agree with me, and that's fine, but I'm just telling you, um, and we are going in a different direction. I find it very difficult to come to the joint meetings and have tension over what our administration, can they go to this conference because it supports Milton, can't they go to this conference because it supports Wakefield? And that we had so much, there's a lot of animosity that the tension, not the tension, but the directions that they're going are different, and the division of time was a concern for me, because I wanted them to be able to better themselves to make Milton successful, but I also wanted them to be able to focus directly on us, and I'm thinking that that might be an avenue. I think financially, we might be better off because our, the percentages that we pay and the weighted vote that they have, um, and I think that in moving forward, I would think that if we could have an administration solely focused on the children in this community, it might be greatly more advantageous to the kids that are here. We need successful, town-oriented people that want to step up and be an active part in this community, and I think that if we can make it smaller and more focused, that the kids here might have a better advantage, and that was my, that's just me, I don't know what the other three thought, but I want that for my grandchildren.
So you're feeling that the superintendent's, um, duties were being pulled more towards Milton than towards us?
Not necessarily, but if you can imagine, there's only so many hours in a day, and say there's something extremely important that he needs to do because it's part of something on their end, does it mean that we're not having a hundred percent focused on us?
They have the same thing happening to them though, too, when he has focuses on us.
That's my point, so why, if it's, if we can do it more successfully right here, why would we not investigate that? It hasn't been investigated in the past, but yet it's something that is entirely possible, but we just haven't had the chance to really look at it and really question it, and they have, I hate to say, but they're the ones that got me thinking about it, because when they asked for removal from us-
I remember that.
It opened up an avenue that I hadn't even considered before.
Didn't we have to consider it because they were considering it?
Absolutely, but-
So now we've put them into the same position that they now have to seriously consider being their own SAU as well?
We put them into the position that they asked for in the beginning, is how I look at it.
Bob?
And it kind of opened our eyes a little bit, you know, 'cause we had a few meetings about this, and we actually crunched some numbers, and what we saw, um, from our, our first crunching numbers, it was, uh, pretty good savings if, if we could do it, if it could, if it could happen.
I, that budget was, in my opinion, sorely not ready to even consider moving forward. There were sixty-two percent of your line items that were zeroed out, a big one being that there was no place, you didn't even have any monetary figure for, um, housing for where it would be.
I, I, I agree with you, I agree, we haven't-
And unfortunately, I, I, I was kind of, as a resident, upset that it was even on the ballot, and I don't think we were ready yet to even go there, however, I am very glad that it will be brought to the public, you know, once, you know, if it gets approved by the state.
Silla?
So I take it this possible riff was discussed with the teachers in Paris before it was brought to the board, hence the turnout? Those people just automatically showed up?
I would imagine it's 'cause the budget-
Mr. Tursi came and spoke to us about the ramifications of the budget, and then just said, you know, this is what's going on, he didn't mention anything at that meeting, but I think it was pretty obvious to us where that was going to lead.
Thank you, thank you very much, Liz. And I corrected saying that you neglected to put that two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars back in your budget during deliberative session? Either Barbara or DRA, have you ever caught this? Is that correct?
I can't answer.
I'd answer you if I could.
Can the superintendent answer me?
The board like for me to answer that question?
Please.
At a deliberative session, only the voting body can add a number into that through a motion, and there wasn't a motion made, the deliberative session add those monies in.
Are you saying the school board never could not add that money in?
School board member could have made the motion, a budget committee member could have made the motion, any resident of Wakefield at the time could have made that motion, not the superintendent or the attorney.
I understand that, but nobody on the school board chose to add that money in. You neglected to add that money into your budget, so now you're threatening a riff. I think it's a scare tactic, I think you have a transfer fund that you could put a dollar in and transfer your Title I and Title II A money into it. This is a scare tactic. That's my comment.
Thank you.
I don't know.
To make a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91 dash A, semicolon, three, two, B, contracts.
Aye.
Joy, aye?
Fogg, aye.
Brown, yes.
You're gonna be long?
Shouldn't be long.
Okay.